I call a meeting order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Jim Littleton from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church, and he may tell us a little bit about what's going on over there. A lot of construction people. And welcome back.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yeah, we're in the process of restoring our 100-year-old sanctuary and adding a new North X to the church, and so far, as the Mayor indicated, it's going really well. We're trying to maintain a lot of that history of that building, and we're also trying to make it more functional. So, so far, so good. We're hoping to open in October. The North X adds about 4,500 feet of functionality, not really seats. One thing we did in particular that was special, we have 100-year-old pews that are curved. They're curved pews, and you cannot buy curved pews anymore. And we found a company in Clinton, North Carolina, that restores pews. They came last year and took them all apart, and they still have them restoring this old, this old ash wood is what they are. So, we would've gained more seats if we replaced them, but the church said, "No, we want to keep them." So, that's something special we're doing, and we're excited for what God's doing through the people at our church.
And you kept my transit window.
Yeah, your transit window's still there. That's right, that's right.
MYF 1957. Well, never mind.
Thank you. Let us pray. "Hail Almighty God, we give thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us this day. We give thanks for a chance to come and meet publicly, safely, God, to conduct the business of this community. Lord, we pray for the elected officials of our city. We pray for our first responders. We pray for the many staff that work hard to make Holly Springs a special place. God, tonight, we give special thanks also to our parents of all of our children that work so hard, God, to work, to raise their kids, and send them to school. They're our heroes, God, in our community. And Lord, as our space continues to grow, may we hold on to that culture and that sense of charity that makes Holly Springs a special place. May we continue to love our neighbor as ourself. We ask this in the name of our risen Lord. Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Good seeing you again.
Thank you, sir.
And good luck. I remember five, or I remember four, excuse me. Is the adjustment approval of the July 18, 2017 meeting agenda, Mayor Pretend?
Motion to adopt the July 18 meeting agenda with the following changes: Remove from new business item 9E the MEMS Stormwater Device Project bids, since there were no bids received.
Your second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. That was 9E, right? Okay. Item number five, public comment period. At this point in time, we have a three-minute section and 15 minutes total, and I have one person signed up. I think I know who this is. Gerald Holloman. You know the drill.
[inaudible]
Gerald, I didn't do it last time either. We haven't turned, we haven't turned the lights on yet.
I think I must've been asleep, but I got a problem.
Uh-uh.
I see Holly Springs inhabited schools up in about, what, '90, '91, somewhere along there? I forgot when they built Holly Springs Elementary School.
It was about that. I think about '89.
Our school was built here, I guess, two or more close in the '70s. And now, I noticed that we got a lot of schools going on here, and we're shipping kids in here from Raleigh and shipping kids that live here to Apex Friendship. Now, what's going on with that?
I asked that question, but go ahead.
I don't understand that. I thought the days of busting students were hopefully over with. I've lived in five states in the last first 20 years of my working career, and I moved from North Carolina to South Carolina, then I moved to Michigan. I got to Michigan, and I said, "Well," we had school districts up there. I said, "Well, wait till the federal government gets here, they're gonna fix this mess." So, guess who they had the rings draw around downtown Saginaw, was the Hispanics and the African-Americans, all boxed in this district. You couldn't cross district lines. They said, "Oh, no, we're gonna get our guns." But anyway, then I came back down here, and the state is entirely different. Now, what is the difference in living in Michigan and living in North Carolina? I don't understand. And our kids are being bussed out of town, and we got schools here, a lot of schools, and what's, there's something wrong with this, but they tell me they can't get federal money if you don't have a racial balance. I thought we were past that. That's ridiculous. But we're not past that, apparently, with the federal government. So, I'm asking the town council and the Mayor and whoever else can to start calling somebody and finding out how to stop this mess. Because I know when my grandchildren bust the Apex Friendship, they're born here, they grew up here, they need to stay in school here. That's for everybody that lives in this town. Makes no sense to bust somebody to another town and bring people from another town down here. Send them over there. Thank you.
We agree. I've already done it once, I'll do it again. I didn't get a very good answer then either. Okay. Thank you. This point in time, a closed public hearing, and go to... Agenda 6A, request communication. Facility update from Wake Med Health and Hospitals. Tom Goff, Wake Med Administrator at the Cary Hospital, and Andy Curtis, who's here too. I've known Andy for a while. Hi, Andy. Welcome, by the way. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. It is really a pleasure to be here. My name is Tom Goff. I'm the Senior Vice President and Administrator at Wake Med Cary Hospital. I have had the pleasure in the past couple of years, I've been the administrator there for two years, of meeting several times with the Mayor, and I think I've met with Councilman O'Brien once, but this is the first chance. I've had to address the full Council, so it's really a pleasure. Your residents are our patients, so we have so much in common, and there are so many residents of Holly Springs that work at our Wake Med Cary Hospital and throughout the Wake Med system that we really have a lot in common. The other thing we have in common, just to state the obvious, is just as you are growing as a town at a really phenomenal rate, we are growing at an exponential rate as a healthcare system. So, I'm happy tonight to share with you just a couple of updates about things that are going on within the Wake Med system. The first is really just a general slide. I think most of you know, but we are the largest provider of healthcare services in Wake County, largest if you count numbers of providers and number of distinct facilities. We have three main hospitals, the one that you probably know most up north, a few miles in Cary. We also have a facility in Raleigh, which is a tertiary facility with close to 600 beds. It functions as Wake County's only Level 1 trauma center for really seriously injured patients from within the county. And then, we have a relatively new hospital, two years old now, in North Raleigh, that started as a women's hospital and now is a full-service hospital serving that market. We have a couple of specialty hospitals, both of them in Raleigh. One is our rehab hospital. The rehab hospital is located on New Bern Avenue, and it serves a distinct population of people that have traumatic brain injuries, that have spinal cord injuries, that have had strokes, and other neurological conditions, and it's very specialized in the care that it provides. And then, we also have, as probably you know, Wake County's only children's hospital in Raleigh, which we're really proud of, along with a children's emergency room, which is very unique, and not many exist actually throughout the country, other than in really large metropolitan areas. So, we're excited about the unique expertise that that facility has as well. And then, we also have a series of what we call health plexes. There are four in total. Apex, Briar Creek, Garner are our largest, and they serve basically a sort of freestanding emergency rooms and urgent care centers, and they're generally co-located with a bunch of doctors' offices in those communities. And the thought there being to continue, as Wake County grows, with all of its towns and cities, to bring healthcare as close as we can to the residents, to cut down drive times and make healthcare convenient. And then, finally, we have a large medical staff on each of our three major campuses, but we have over 50 different physician offices throughout Wake County, multi-specialty, primary care, and specialists, and surgeons. And the slide that's up for the audience has 200-plus physicians, but it's actually close to 300 physicians that we now employ, and a very large number of independent doctors that work at all of our facilities as well. So, as a healthcare system, as you know, we're nonprofit. We exist for the people and by the people, so we're constantly taking a look at our own planning data, just like you look at planning data at the town level, trying to figure out how do the services that we offer match up with the needs of the population, the needs of the population that lives here, and the needs of the populations that are moving into the cities and towns that we serve. And that is a big part of our mission. Within Wake Med Cary, I think you're probably aware, we're a full-service hospital. There's very few things that we don't offer. We're now 25-plus years old. We started small, but we've continued to add, particularly in the past couple of years, to the breadth and scope of services that we offer. We have a large birthing center. We call it Women's Birth Place and Pavilion, that not only offers maternity services, but also offers the full service of mammography and bone density and pelvic floor therapy, which is for folks that have incontinence, lymphedema treatment, a variety of services, both inpatient and outpatient, that serve the needs of women. We have a Level 3 neonatal intensive care unit for those babies that are very sick, staffed full-time, 24/7, 365, with neonatologists, so that we can care for babies that are born 32 weeks to 40 weeks and have special needs. And then, we also wrap around that service a set of physicians that are called maternal fetal medicine doctors, and they are specially trained in women that are designated upfront as having potentially high risk or actually high-risk births based on their personal health condition. So, for example, somebody that has type 2 diabetes is at risk, their baby for having some potential complications if they're not taken care of in utero, and those types of doctors shepherd them along the way and make certain that they're getting the best care possible to maximize the outcome at birth. We have a 12-bed intensive care unit. It is staffed around the clock with critical care medicine doctors. These are doctors that are specially trained in taking care of patients that are extraordinarily sick. We have medical and surgical beds. We have a cardiac intensive care unit. We have what we call a step-down unit or intermediate care unit for people who have really complex surgeries and need not quite to go to an ICU, but need close to ICU-level care. And then, we have a whole cadre of outpatient services, because that's really where a lot of care is moving, to the outpatient setting. So, many of the things that I saw 30 years ago, when I started my career as a healthcare administrator, and like the gentleman before me, I've worked in six different states around the country, from the Midwest to the Mid-Atlantic to New England to now the South. And as care gets more advanced, more and more of it is being provided in the outpatient setting, in one-day settings or in walk-in settings. So, there's a huge growth within the Wake Med Cary campus and all around our service area, including here in Holly Springs and towns that we serve, in trying to put outpatient services that people no longer need to go to the hospital for. A big one that we focused on a lot in the last year is cardiology and specifically vascular services, or what they call peripheral vascular services. So, I think you're probably aware, a lot of folks, when they get a blockage in their heart, they come in, they get a stent to get rid of the occlusion. That same phenomenon happened, can happen in any artery or vein within your body, and so we have a brand-new vascular lab within Wake Med Cary Hospital that prevents people from needing to go to Raleigh for that type of care, where we can put stents in any of your arteries or veins throughout your body, or do what we call ablations, which is remove some of the plaque or the atherosclerosis that builds up in arteries and veins without having to put a stent in. So, that's a really important service for you to know about, because it is the case, if you look at incidence and prevalence, that when we get to 65 years old, 25 to 30% of us will have some kind of PAD, peripheral arterial disease, a blockage in our veins and arteries, unless we had a really healthy diet throughout our prior years and did a lot of exercise and had good genes to boot. So, that is a great service that we now offer to Holly Springs and to all of the communities that we serve. We also have a really unique partnership that you've probably seen on the news or probably in other media outlets, which is a collaboration with Duke Health System. So, we have really taken a look at two areas, Hartz and oncology in particular, and ways that we can collaborate in the space that we operate. So, we are two not-for-profit health systems. We are not merging or getting together in any kind of formal legal sense, but we each, when we got together, believed that we could make each other's services better by joining our forces and thinking about how we could fill in gaps in care. We are, within Hartz, for example, the largest provider within Wake County. We do more heart procedures and see more heart-related patients, both inpatient and outpatient, than any other provider, more than either of the two other systems. And yet, the Duke Health System didn't have much of a presence in Wake County, and likewise in oncology, they are the market leader within not just Wake County and North Carolina, but they're one of the top five providers in the country within the oncology space. And so, we thought we could make oncology services better for the residents in all of the areas that we serve within Wake County, not just Western Wake County, by collaborating with them. So, you'll be hearing more about that partnership, but it's really unique. I think you're gonna see more of this in the healthcare field, where, you know, all three systems, again, are nonprofit, where we go beyond the traditional competitive boundaries and think about ways we can make things better for patients, how we can provide services that are of higher quality, how we can improve patient experience, and how we can provide less expensive services by getting together in some areas, still competing in others, but getting together in a number of areas. So, more to come on that. There are a number of advanced services that we offer at Wake Med Cary Hospital. Most of these did not exist when we started 25 years ago. These aren't in any particular order, but hip and knee replacements, orthopedics, is something that we do a lot of. We are a designated center of excellence by every accrediting body out there, certainly by Blue Cross and United and Cigna and all the major health plans. They look at our quality data and compare us to other facilities and try to identify those that they think are in the top 10%, and that's something orthopedics that we do really well. We also are a designated center of excellence in the space of bariatrics. So, as we all know, folks, many folks decide after weight loss therapy if they are really challenged with weight loss issues to have bariatric surgery, and we have a total of eight physicians, surgeons on our staff that do bariatric surgery. That's not a first resort for people, but it is an option for many people to try to improve their lifestyle, and more importantly, to reduce other comorbidities, diseases that they have, because weight loss surgery can in fact change your entire life and remediate a lot of other healthcare conditions that you have. So, we are really good at that. We do about 600 procedures a year. Maternity care is something that we're a designated center of excellence in. We have within the Wake Med system the sixth lowest rate of C-sections in the entire country. So, one of our goals that you've probably heard our CEO, Donald Ginsick, talk about is our goal within the Wake Med system is not just to continue to strive to be the best for patients and residents in the towns and cities that we serve in Wake County, but to be top 10 in the United States. And we have a ways to go in many areas, but maternity service is not one of them. We're already the sixth lowest C-section rate in the county. It's 16%, and the national average is in the 35% range. So, you have about half of much chance, if you go to one of the Wake Med facilities, of having a C-section, as you do if you go somewhere else. And that's something that we're really proud of, because more and more women want to have a natural birth, if in fact they can. We're an accredited stroke center, so again, as the population ages and more and more folks have strokes, we are designated as a stroke center, which means we've held ourselves to a national accrediting body that comes in and really looks at the way that patients who get stroke care are taken care of, our outcomes, our preventative services, how quickly we get people TPA, which is what unblocks the occlusion in your brain. Everything from what happens in the field when EMS picks you up at your house or your workplace, or wherever you may be having a stroke, and brings you to the hospital, to everything that happens when you leave the hospital. So, we're really proud of stroke care. Chest pain is another area, so many folks have chest pain, some of them are having a heart attack, some of them not. We're a designated center of excellence in trying to quickly make that determination and get people to the right point of care. General surgery, spine surgery for folks that have back problems, orthopedics, primary care, pulmonary and sleep medicine. Sleep medicine is probably worth talking about. We're one of the only regional sleep labs in the area. We're accredited by the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, which is a big deal. That's an organization that really looks at how you're taking care of people with sleep problems, which believe it or not, afflict probably 30, 35% of us to different degrees, and it can affect your entire health if you don't get enough sleep. So, we have a center of excellence in Cary available that serves probably people from, we get people from as far away as 60, 70, 80 miles away coming to that center. Thoracic surgery is something that's brand-new at Wake Med Cary. It didn't exist even three months ago. It exists today with a thoracic surgeon, so people who have lung nodules or have cancer of the lung, they were smokers all their life, or maybe not smokers, but they just got lung cancer. You can in fact get lung cancer without being a smoker, now have a resource locally, and again, we're trying to provide really high-quality care as close to people's homes as we possibly can. Urology, vascular surgery is again a relatively new service within the Wake Med Cary system, endocrinology for folks that have diabetes or other metabolic conditions, the whole suite of cardiology services, folks that need pacemakers, folks that need defibrillators, folks that have arrhythmias that don't need devices, and folks that have arteries and veins that need to be unblocked. All of that we offer at Wake Med Cary. And then, gastroenterology, we have a whole set of new services this year that didn't exist at any time in the past for a variety of conditions that afflict our stomachs, our intestines, our pancreas, our liver, et cetera, and some specialized doctors that didn't exist to take care of those. So, this is my really long-winded way of saying that we have a lot of new services, and like I said, just as you're growing, so are we, trying to bring services close to people's homes. I won't bore you with details, but we invite some 30 different accrediting organizations into Wake Med Cary. So, we may think our good, we're good, but that doesn't really matter. What matters is trying to bring independent national people who are experts in all the different disease etiologies into Wake Med to sort of validate, are we doing what we should with different patient populations, and how can we do a better job? And a big part of what they do when they come in, usually for a week at a time, is to share best practices from around the country, so that we're learning here in North Carolina and in Wake County and in Western Wake about the best practices that are going on on the West Coast, on the East Coast, in other parts of the South, in New England, et cetera. Nursing excellence, we're one of only a few systems in the area that are magnet designation for nurses. So, what that means is all of the nurses at Wake Med System, regardless of where they work, have committed to certifications and degrees that are advanced, and so they have extra training beyond that which the traditional nursing staff have. I talked about stroke and cardiac care and bariatric imaging. We do a lot of imaging. We are designated center of excellence for just about every type of imaging or X-ray study that you could possibly have. That makes a big difference, because the two main venues through which people get diagnosed are through various types of X-rays, images, and through lab tests. And so, those are really important modalities to be good at. And then, the last thing, as I opened, is we have roughly 1,200 people, just shy of 1,200 people at Wake Med Cary, and yet, we have over 100 people at Wake Med Cary who live in the town of Holly Springs, and we have close to 270 within our system who work at different Wake Med facilities. So, we're not only proud of the fact that we are constantly looking out for the healthcare needs of the people who live in Holly Springs, but we're proud of the fact that so many of your residents have taken up employment in our facility and are helping to provide care, not just to the residents of Holly Springs, but to the rest of the folks in Western Wake County. And the last statistic I had on the slide was we treated, it says, almost 5,400 patients in our emergency room specifically from Holly Springs just in the last year. And that's a lot. We see about 45,000 visits to our emergency room. That's not including all the outlying urgent cares, but just in the Cary facility emergency room, and a very large portion of them are folks from Holly Springs. So, we're happy that you all have trusted us for your care for so many years. We're gonna continue to strive to work with all the different facets of the town, to think about how we can keep people in Holly Springs and other parts of our service area healthy. We're working with the town Parks and Recreation Department to bring a new program to children in Holly Springs called the Energize Program. It's a weight management program to keep kids fit and in the right body mass index, so that they get less health problems as they get older and into their adult years. And it's those types of preventative services that are really the future. The hospital is a place you hope you don't want to wind up, but if you do, we're ready for you. But the real focus of our continued efforts, both here in your town and in other towns, is really outreach to keep people healthy through their primary care doctor and through creative programs with other town and city departments. So, I am happy to answer questions, if you have them, about Wake Med Cary or just the Wake Med system in general.
Any questions? You covered it pretty thoroughly, I thought.
You have a lot of, a lot of services and a number of locations, which I think is fantastic, especially so close to us. However, if I'm in the ER or one of these, having a procedure done, when you hear the tech or the nurse say, "The doctor will be right in," to me, that means 30 to 60 minutes. What's being done at Wake Med to limit or reduce wait times?
Yeah, a lot. We have a whole set of systems that we have adopted, a system that the Toyota manufacturing folks have developed that is looking at lean process management and how we can move the flow of patients along faster and eliminate waste inefficiencies in time and other things. The average time at Wake Med Cary for a patient from, we call it door-to-doct, from the time you walk in the emergency room to when you see a doctor is 32 minutes. We'd like to do a lot better than that. I think what you're gonna see going forward is more and more emergency rooms are going to eliminate the traditional triage function, where you come to the waiting room, you see the nurse from triage, you go back into the waiting room and you sit, and then you go into a bay when you get called. That triage function can really occur, if you think about it, that's like an extra step in the bay when you get to the back, right? So, that's really our goal. And I think I am extraordinarily sensitive as the head of Wake Med Cary, and I can tell you the rest of our practitioners are, to the fact that the copays and the coinsurance amounts for people, myself included, when you go to the emergency room, right? It used to be like 10, 15, 25 bucks, I'm dating myself, and now it's like 75, 100. We see people with $200, $250 copays. It's a big deal to go to the emergency room. So, you not only want really expert care, but you want the very best service that you can get, and a big part of that is wait times. You know, I think increasingly you'll see that the old way of waiting four, five, six hours from the time you walk in the door to the time that you leave is gonna become the thing of the past, and I can tell you that every system is working on trying to improve that. And what you know already is the fact that we're really blessed in Western Wake County and in Wake County in general, with three big systems, all of them, you know, that's a good thing. It's choices for consumers, and it forces everybody to up their game and to think about how do we improve quality, how do we improve service, wait times just being one dimension, and how do we provide the least expensive care at a high quality? And that's, that's a good thing for all of us.
Hope they never have to take advantage of your approval.
Anything else?
Well, I'm a former employee of Wake Med Cary. I worked in the ER there for 10 years as a patient rep, and back then, it was the place to go. I mean, Apex was built towards the end of my time there, and so, that's where everybody went, it was closest. And now that there's more competition coming, what, you have a lot of new services and things like that, so what is Wake Med gonna do to, I mean, people are still gonna go there, there's loyalty. So, what is Wake Med gonna do to keep these patients and to keep people, you know, coming back and choosing Wake Med for their healthcare?
I think it's twofold. I think part of it is developing a relationship with people to keep them healthy, so hopefully we're getting more and more away as an industry, and certainly, I think, all of facilities in Wake County, this is a huge focus of Wake Meds, is not providing episodic care, waiting till you come in and you're sick, but trying to keep you healthy in your home environment or in your town or city. The other part of it is really just about matching up our quality and our outcomes to the best in class within the country. So, I think one big difference from 10 years ago, I know myself, is that more and more consumers are getting savvy about going online and looking up the quality and the cost of care, and I see that as a really good thing for the Wake Med system, because we'll put our quality scores and our outcomes, and we'll definitely put our value proposition in terms of the cost up against anybody. And, you know, it used to be that people would ask their neighbor, and I'm not saying that doesn't happen anymore, or look at a billboard or see something in a magazine. More and more people are going online, and there is a ton of information out there. If you want, if you have chronic heart failure, you have any sort of chronic condition, diabetes, pick anything, you need surgery, you need a hip or a knee replacement, you need cardiovascular care, you have hypertension, no matter what you pick, you can go online and through, you know, as you probably know, you know, 10 different publicly reportable data sources, find out how the Wake Med system stacks up to the Duke system, stacks up to the UNC system, and that is data that I hope more and more people will be looking at, because we fare really well in that. And that makes for more informed consumers, and I tell people, our best clientele, the patients that use our system, are the ones that take the time to do that research. People owe it to themselves, and it's a good, it's...
And when you have choices, you need to do that.
Yes, you do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Tom, just first off, thank you for putting yourself up there to allow us to ask you these questions. You have 100 employees, Cary employees here in Holly Springs, you've got 267 Wake Med employees here. Looking at the map that you showed earlier, there's, you have a presence in Apex, you have a presence in Garner, but there's nothing really down here in Holly Springs, Fuquay, this particular lower end of the county. Are there any plans to expand your presence here in this particular area? Because we are a very growing, vibrant section of the county, and wait times include time it takes for me to get from my home to your facility.
Yes, about 20 minutes, right? Yeah, so...
Your take.
Yeah, right. There absolutely are. We have a number of facilities, primary care offices and specialist offices in Fuquay, and we are in the process of continuing to expand into Holly Springs and other contiguous towns. We have a number of primary care offices and obstetrical offices that are in the works for Holly Springs proper, yeah. So, I think you'll see more and more of a presence in this area. And that's just a natural outgrowth of the population growth and our continued desire to bring care as close to people's home as we can.
Perfect.
And sometimes that 20-minute drive can be 30 or 40. I know that myself.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jan 6B requests communication, Stagework Theater of Holly Springs, Dan Barth. Hi again.
Trina.
How you doing?
Good, seeing you again, Mr. Mayor.
Good, same here.
Thank you, committee. Thank you for the time tonight. So, not like the predecessor, I had this wonderful deck prepared as well, and the entire thing crashed on me. So, instead of a performance set in rehearsal, I'm going to improv the entire thing and see how it goes, okay? So, I am Dan Barth. I relocated to the Triangle about six years ago from New Hampshire, having done 25 to 30 years of local theater in the New England area before coming here, and set out to find what the theater opportunities were here in the Triangle and traveled to many places and landed in a meeting here in 2014 at the Cultural Center where there was interest in starting to stage live theater again. So, we put on a show called "A Bad Year for Tomatoes" in fall of 2014, maybe some of you saw it. And that played very well. We had 300, hand up, yes, good, audience member, fantastic, all right. Keep that in mind because there's more of that coming as we go here, okay? We had 300-plus people for the show. It was very clear that theater would have play here in Holly Springs if we started to organize it, so we continued this journey forward. And we've actually done five shows up until this point. That was followed by a show called "All in the Timing" by David Ives, a set of five one-acts set to comedy. And then, two shows by a writing team called Hope Jones and Wooten. The first one was "The Dixie Swim Club." The second was "Always a Bridesmaid." That gets us more to current day here. "Always a Bridesmaid" was not too long ago. Finally, we also staged an original murder mystery that I wrote myself called "Holly Springs Got Talent and Murder," in a desert theater that sold out for two performances. And I'm happy to say that's going to have a command performance again this coming September on the 29th or 30th of the month with three big shows, including a matinee on Saturday afternoon. So, this head of steam was clearly showing us that there was a taste for live theater in Holly Springs. And I think there'd been some history and some dabbling, and groups had come and gone. But we continued focused, and by the time 2016 was rolling around, Kathleen Abar and I sat down and started to form a real plan to go after this thing. So, that was the birth of this newly-formed Stagework Theater of Holly Springs, which we started to organize at that point and start to plan our first full season, which I am very excited to announce, kicks off this September with four shows running through next summer. We actually already have some light planning in place for season two because we know we're going to kill it, season one. So, there'll be all this call for additional follow-up there. Our four shows coming up are "God's Favorite" by Neil Simon, not one of his overly-known shows, but a very funny show about the story of Job from the Old Testament, set in modern-day with a lot of comedy attached to it. You'll enjoy it very much. And then, "There Were None" by Agatha Christie, which is probably her best-known mystery to date. A show called "Whose Life Is It Anyway?" by an author named Brian Clark, which is not often done, but a dramatic and very thought-provoking piece. And finally, we're going to circle back to that good Southern fried comedy with Hope Jones and Wooten with a show called "Mama Won't Fly." Now, to this point, I've been the director of the first five shows. We're spreading the wealth going into our season. And we formed a board around this initiative at this juncture because we're going to get a lot more done if we have more hands-on deck, right? So, seven of my colleagues and friends and fellow thespians joined me. I should denote that some are from a theatrical background, some are from a business background because boards work well when you have a mixed basis of education and knowledge and background. So, we've been hard at it getting the season going. We have planted a season subscription package that actually, we did a kickoff called our Overture Season, which was made up of the two Hope Jones and Wooten shows, "The Murder Mystery" and "Finding Patients," just to test the waters, to see if a subscription package would work. And we sold about 20 in about a month, which was a pretty good start for us. I'm very excited to say that with about a month and a half of a few public outings so far, we have 50 season tickets sold already for the first season with the goal of 100 well in sight, and I think we'll probably go well beyond that as things move forward. We are excited to have the season ticket in place, and we're looking forward to getting more of a word of our company out to folks in not only this area, but all the surrounding communities as well. So, we have a Facebook page set up now. If you just go and look up Stageworks, it's one word, you'll find us there. We have a web presence now on the town of Holly Springs website, same thing, you can go in and search there. Tickets can be bought on etix.com via search for either the Holly Springs Cultural Center or the name of the show. You can also just show up at the desk over at the Cultural Center, and you can do either individual tickets or the season tickets. And the season tickets, it's my one artifact I do have with me, is a form that you can find online if you go in there. And to kick off our first season, all four shows, it's only $40 for all four. I don't think you're going to find a better entertainment budget or value in the Triangle at this point. So, our goal is to put forward excellence in theater. We've got a nice mixed first season coming up with a couple of comedies and a mystery and a drama. We'll do the same format and flavor going into season two. And what we need to do at this point is now start to engage the community, engage the leaders of the community and the members of the community to help spread the word about us. One thing that was evident as we've done some of our public outings so far is that people still aren't quite sure who we are. They've seen a couple of the shows, but they're not really aware of our name or our presence or what's going on. So, we're making a strong effort to get that word out, but you know how this works. If we can press through the town and other folks who are here, that will help our cause. We're wide open and accepting everyone coming in who wants to get involved. Couple of our board members do live here in Holly Springs. The rest of us are made up of other neighboring communities. And we have encouraged theater goers of all types to come see us. We've encouraged all artists to come in. We've got open calls for auditions. We'll be publishing all that as we move forward. So, I think that the biggest things, just to recap, I guess, is we want to start to get known among the businesses. We did have two major sponsors in our first Overture Season, if you will. MyComputerCareer.edu got behind us for one big show, and the Main Street Dentistry Group got behind us for one big show, and a couple of ads along the way as well. So, as we grow our subscription base and our audience base, it's an excellent way for local business to advertise through us. And then, we also want to be pushing the opportunity to get more people to come out and support us in different ways. So, one thing that we'll be looking forward to in building as we get going here is some of the infrastructure that's secured and local groups have to have to be successful down the road. It's wonderful to have the space, and it's wonderful to have the situation we have. We need to get to storage capabilities at some point. We need to be able to pull in certain amounts of props and materials to build sets. You don't want to have to do everything from scratch every time you do a show. It gets very expensive that way. So, as we progress, we'll be looking at those avenues. The board that we formed is trying to be very self-sufficient in pushing our name out, but we are working in partnership at the same time with Kathleen and any entity that's willing to talk with us and work with us to continue to spread this wonderful new local theater coming here to Holly Springs. I think in a nutshell, that was the presentation. For improv, not too bad, huh?
Sounded like it to me. Questions? Comments?
You winged it well.
Great, thank you. So, we'll look forward to seeing you all, right?
Get a little more enthusiasm, if you would.
Little bit? A little more enthusiasm?
A little more.
All right. Well, come see the show. I'm in the next show. I get a lot of enthusiasm. You'll see it all on stage.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Jan 6C requests communication, Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce Communications, Scott Manning, Chamber Director. Hi, Scott.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic.
You're looking good.
Good to see you all. I want to begin by thanking the council for their renewed support of the chamber for 2017, 2018. We truly could not do it without your support, and we appreciate it, and we think that we are fantastic stewards of the investment you all choose to make in our initiatives. So, we thank you for that. Back in the fall of 2015, the chamber created a sports and leisure task force with the specific intent of bringing sports and leisure tourism to Holly Springs. Outcome from that was the National Club Baseball Association World Series. I saw many of you at the games. It was a fantastic event. I want to thank those people that were part of the local organizing committee, everyone from Justin Sellers from the Coastal Plain League, Tommy Atkinson with the Salamanders, Teresa Tyler with the Greater Raleigh Sports Alliance, Travis Kelly with Zaxby's, Wayne Holt with 9119 Beer, John Dolby with Rodney Signs, and Lynn Bradley, Adam Huffman, and Danny Lovelace with Holly Springs Parks and Rec. We could not have had a better team to be assembled to bring this tournament to Holly Springs. So, Lynn, I know you're here. Adam, thank you guys so much for your support in that. It was a fun week. We had everything from vulture effigies and everything in between. So, it was a great, a great week for Holly Springs.
Our town bird.
Our town bird, right? Right? I also want to thank the hometown support from a sponsorship perspective. GMA Supply was our presenting sponsor for the tournament. Without their financial support, I think things would have been a little bit different. So, I know Sean is here. Thank you very much for GMA's support, as well as Zaxby's and the Mason Jar Tavern were both sponsors of that event, as well as Rodney's Signs for designing the banners. So, from a numbers perspective, we had 227 players and coaches travel to Holly Springs from Michigan, Utah, Nevada, Texas, Colorado, Florida, Pennsylvania, and North Carolina. From a spectator attendance, it was 2,773, and the majority of those were outside of Holly Springs and outside of Wake County. Another number is 519. That's the total number of room nights that this tournament brought. Unfortunately, not to Holly Springs. They brought, those 519 were taken care of by Cary. So, from a wants and needs analysis, I think that supports a need for another hotel in Holly Springs. I just came from a topping-off ceremony for a new Homewood Suites in Cary. I would love to attend a topping-off celebration for a new hotel in Holly Springs. So, I think those numbers support it. I think what you will see from the Coastal Plain League and their All-Star Game will support the need for another hotel in Holly Springs. I do want to read a comment from Christian Smith, who's the VP of Baseball Operations. The Greater Raleigh Sports Alliance, of course, sends a survey out to the groups and asks them to rate everything from the airport to the facility. And this is what he had to say about North Main Athletic Complex. He said, "It's the best facility we have ever used for any of our national championships. We felt honored to be able to have our signature event in such an amazing facility. Parents, teams, and staff alike were blown away by how awesome it was. We are under contract for 2018, but hope to make Holly Springs and North Main Athletic Complex a permanent home for the D1 World Series. It is truly a gem, and we feel honored to be able to use it." So, straight from Christian Smith. We certainly look forward to 2018 and hope that we can find a way to make a long-term agreement work. On the same tourism perspective, I've actually been asked to serve on the Steering Committee for the Greater Raleigh Convention and Visitors Bureau as they formulate the 10-year strategic plan for tourism in Wake County. So, it's going to be a 13-month process, and I look forward to representing Holly Springs in that endeavor. There's going to be about 15 of us, local leaders from all across Wake County. So, it should be a fun 13-month process, hopefully. Moving along, a great collaboration that we have with the town is Center Street Market. That's been going on since May. It's been amazing to see the growth that we've experienced, not only from interested vendors, but also people coming to the market. This year, we had 57 applicants, some for individual months, some seasonal. From a social media perspective, we have 451 Facebook likes for the Center Street Market page, 457 followers, and the posts from this week, so getting everyone to come to Center Street Market and the Farmers Market, reached almost 3,400 people. So, the word is spreading. We have a waitlist for all months. We have a five-star review status. And I just want to read one comment from one of our vendors. "I had a blast at Center Street Market this past Saturday. I had my highest sales day ever. The Holly Springs market community seemed to connect with and appreciate my handmade craft goods, and I was able to get my business cards in many, many hands. I'm eager to come back in October if you can find me a spot." So, interesting and fun collaboration that we're doing with the town to really have an impact on small business in Holly Springs. So, we love that collaboration. On the note of collaboration, we are working with the Apex and Fuquay Verena Chambers of Commerce to host the first-ever Southwest Wake Community Festival. It's going to be on September 9th. It's a Saturday, and it's going to be at Hope Community Church. That is sponsored by UNC Rex Healthcare. And just as a side, I know the Wake Med folks have left, but when they talk about collaboration between Wake Med, UNC, Rex Hospital, and Duke, I mean, it is evident all across the board. And when I interact outside of Holly Springs, they are fantastic to work with. In this instance, UNC Rex Healthcare is going to help sponsor that initiative. It's both a community family festival as well as being able to highlight local businesses. So, we're more than 50% sold out from a business standpoint, and we'll have food trucks and a little kids' area. Some more to come on that. Additionally, the chamber is in the process of finalizing our chamber foundation. So, we're forming a 501(c)(3). We have all of our paperwork into the IRS, and we're just waiting on their determination letter, which should come shortly. To celebrate the Chamber Foundation, October 13th through 16th is going to be Fall Foundation Weekend. That'll take place at Devil's Ridge. We'll have a casino night and silent auction on Friday, the 13th. And then, on that Monday, we'll host our Gold Star Education Golf Tournament. That is on the 16th. And those funds raised will benefit the Holly Springs Chamber Foundation. We formed the foundation because we realized that there are certain initiatives within the chamber that really should be underneath the umbrella of a charitable foundation, specifically our educational and our workforce development initiatives. So, we look forward to transitioning some of the current programming that falls underneath the chamber umbrella over to the foundation umbrella and really expanding our impact on the Holly Springs community from an education workforce development perspective. Finally, on your agenda for this evening is an Ordinance 17-07. The chamber urges the council to adopt that ordinance. This week, we circulated a letter with our hospitality members, and those signing on to it are Texas Roadhouse, Hickory Tavern, Homegrown Pizza, the Mason Jar Tavern, Devil's Ridge Golf Club, The Club at 12 Oaks, Niche Wine Lounge, Sit Bistro, and My Way Tavern, Fiesta Mexicana, Los Postes, Bombshell Beer Company, and Carolina Brewing Company. So, I sent that all to your inboxes this morning. I know you all received it. So, we look forward to that. And I do, I do have some perspective on that from Jonathan Pierce at the Mason Jar Tavern. He says, "With the passage of Ordinance 17-01, if we alter our hours on Sunday, that stretches the average day for our cooks and servers. This makes it more likely that we will need to hire another couple of cooks to cover prep, line cook positions, and servers. If we do not decide to add more positions, our team would likely get overtime pay, and servers would be making more, raising household income in our community." So, there is a measurable impact that I think this ordinance will have. And the chamber, on behalf of our restaurant members and hospitality members, urges the council to pass that ordinance this evening. So, any questions?
Just to follow up on your comment about the Salamander game.
Yes, sir.
Stadium. During the...
Ting Park.
Well, Ting Park now, yes, of course. Excuse me. During the All-Star Game, which we had here, one of the teams that came in had four or five members from the Savannah Bananas, my favorite team. I love that name. And they were all dressed in yellow. So, I went down and talked to them and said, "What do you think of the stadium? What do you think of this? What do you think of that?" "One of the best they've ever seen." I said, "How was the hospitality between all the people around here with you guys?" "Terrific." So, I felt very good that a team from Savannah came all the way up here, really enjoyed their visit to Holly Springs. And I think that's a commendation to everybody who had anything to do with it.
Totally. Totally. I agree.
I'm looking forward to more of these events that, you know, thanks to your committee, I think it's certainly a testament to your hard work. And then also the fact that the North Main Athletic Complex, Ting Park, was the right decision that this Council made to build that.
Agreed.
Anything else for Scott?
I do agree on the hotel.
It would be...
We're getting to that point now, so...
Yes.
There's been some discussion, but that's...
I'm sure. Great.
And the championship game was phenomenal. The crowd, ECU fans, they were, it was awesome.
They are a fantastic team from a fan support perspective. So I think without ECU being in that tournament, I don't think we would have had the same amount of turnout. But, I don't know, and I don't care because it was great.
At the end where...
It was fantastic.
Their coach was like six foot seven and giving Sean Mayewski a hug. I mean, that was...
Right. It was, you have to understand that with club baseball, I mean, these kids are truly playing the game for the passion and the love of the game. They're not playing after college. So to play in a facility like North Main Athletic Complex is the culmination and the pinnacle of their baseball career. And for us to be able to play a part, a small part in that in their lives is fantastic. So...
And I was told that for all those ECU games, there was not a drop of beer left at the end of the night.
You know, you ran out of beer and you ran out of food. So luckily, there's plenty of that in Holly Springs. So we weren't, weren't for, out that for long.
But they're good problems to have. They can, they can be fixed.
That's right. It's like the mayor says, "I'd rather have the problems that no food and beer, I mean, growth has than no growth has."
You're right the first time.
Right.
Thank you, Scott.
Great.
Looking forward to the future endeavors. Thank you.
Good working with you and the Chamber. Gen I am 7A, public hearing, Annexation A 1701, 4034, Berman Edge Road property. And it's Gina Clapp.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a voluntary annexation petition this evening for public hearing. And it is for just under 16 acres on Berman Edge Road. And you're wondering, where is Berman Edge Road? You have, Avant Fair Road is down here. This is the Morgan Park subdivision here and the logging road. And the fire station is just off the screen. It is tucked in back here. Several months ago, we did a rezoning to rezone this property to R10CU. And this evening, there's a subdivision being requested for this property. So in connection with that subdivision request, they are requesting voluntary annexation to receive access to town utilities. And it is contiguous to our town limits and meets all statutory requirements for annexation.
I hear a bell. Or is it just me? I'm a little worried. No, no problem. Any questions of Gina at this point?
Any? Good? Hi Gina, thank you.
It is a public hearing.
At this point in time, open the public hearing. And I want to say, Kristy, I want to say your last name right, so you may have to help me. Kristy Mercies?
Kristy.
That was close. Please come forward, state your name and your address, please. You have up to three minutes, please.
Up here, yes, please. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, thank you much. Kristy Mercias, 204 Upli Bluffs Drive, Holly Springs. I live in Morgan Park. I am a brand-new resident to Holly Springs as of a few months ago. So first off, I want to thank you guys so much for allowing myself to speak, as well as my wonderful row of folks over there that also come from Morgan Park, so I was speaking for all of us. We know your agenda's tight. We get it. So, high level, and if we can just, can we throw that map back up for a second? I want to do that if I can, because while I don't have, sorry. While I don't have a PowerPoint, I do think it's important to highlight a few things. And I think the biggest reason why we are here tonight is, one, thank you so much, is one, if we can say a thank you in one sense, and another is going to be, in a nice way, information, and another is going to be an ask. So I warn you all now that there is an agenda in my head. All right, so, first thing first. So if you look at where this property is, if I can kind of come over here a little bit, you're going to kind of see that I live right here. So you're going to say, "Oh, Kristy has something here she wants to talk to us about," because her property comes right next to this new subdivision. That's correct, and that's a fact. I knew that when I bought my house four months ago. So I'm not here to talk to you about the zoning or anything to complain about that. Just want to make sure that's very clear. What I do want to talk to you about are a few of the things. One, since we have moved in, myself and my fellow neighbors, who again, Morgan Park is a brand-new subdivision. So we very much thank you for that subdivision, that we are now the proud residents of Holly Springs, and we're thrilled to be here. One thing, though, we have faced since we've moved in is where, if I can use the mouse again, if you see over here where the subdivision goes, over here approximately is a water treatment plant. While I'm not going to read to you the exact language in the Housing Association guidelines for this new subdivision, I do want to make a comment that the one thing that was clear, the only negative, if I can say, outside of some traffic, which, you know, is what it is with growth, right, is going to be, there was a little bit of a foul odor coming out of that water treatment plant. That was, I never got that, those couple times I went by that house, but I was very fortunate, once I signed the papers, that it kind of hit me in the face a few different times. But I will say, I know that you've heard about this, this in the past, this is not new information. I just want to say you've been so kind to work with some options now to try to improve that smell for those of us that live in Morgan Park and the surrounding areas. But again, I do want to highlight that for, you know, if you are going to go through with this long-term, think about those residents and these property owners that you're bringing, because again, the whole point of your town and why this makes it so wonderful is your residents. We are the backbone of your town, clear-cut. So first comment I want to bring up is about the water treatment plant. Second one is construction. So again, I pointed out, we live in a brand-new subdivision. We are actually still going through phases of our own. To this day, we have some construction trucks, vehicles, whatever you want to call it, such, going through our current neighborhood. And while we understand that may happen, I do hope we can talk about, if you're going to come from a certain way here with this division, where are you entering? Where are you exiting? You know, Berman Edge, for example, is a private road, is my understanding. So you would be entering through Morgan Park to reach this area. If that's the case, which entrance, which exit, et cetera? Can we give some, some thought and counsel to that where there's a neighborhood there of many more homes, and I even know the number, and a lot of small children? So this is just a consideration for you. The third one is my ask, and I'm going to leave you with the ask, so it sticks with you. That's the buffer. I will tell you, I am five foot seven, and heels, I'm five foot nine. I'm telling you that for a reason. Someone is requesting a five-foot buffer from my house here on this side to the new subdivision. Someone is requesting a 20-foot buffer. See how there's more land here? 20-foot buffer from over there. Look at my height, five feet's about here. That's not a whole bunch of land, okay? All I'm asking is, if we're looking on 20 feet on one side and five on another, that seems to be a little inequitable last time I checked. The folks that are selling this property happen to live on Berman Edge. I'll leave it at that. My point to all of you is, can we look for some distribution here to say that if we are one subdivision, we are happy to have neighbors on the other side of us? What can we do to make things equitable, understanding that you're not looking to maximize a 20-foot buffer on both sides? That takes away from your land, takes away from your, from your money. Understood. What can we do, though, to try to make things good for the folks of Morgan Park who have just moved into Holly Springs? And that's where I'll leave you.
Got it. Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you so much. Oh, and I'm, I'm not here for the alcohol annex, or the alcohol thing earlier, but that sounds great. There's my feedback.
All right.
Thank you.
All good points. Thank you.
At this point in time, no one else has signed up for the, the public hearing. So at this point in time, we'll close it. Any further discussion or questions, we have Gina. Seeing none? We have one motion.
Make the motion to adopt Annexation Ordinance A 1701, annexing 15.985 acres, more or less, owned by Don S. and Miranda W. Sutton into the corporate limits of the town of Holly Springs.
Second. Motion made in second oral favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Gina. Gen I am 7B, public hearing, 17 SCU 02 slash 17 DP 04, Thames Academy, Matt Beard. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Hang on just a second, Matt. Okay, go for it. And again, this is sworn testimony, so go ahead, Matt.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
The next item in front of you is for Thales Academy School located on Holly Springs New Hill Road. It is located just past the intersection with Old Holly Springs Apex Road. This is the Hensley subdivision with the, there's a proposed extension to the Hensley subdivision at the adjacent property. We can kind of discuss that as part of the site plan review. The property is zoned R10, so they would be required to get a special exception use in order to establish a school on that residential property. So the future land use plan shows the property as residential, just outside of a regional And the residential designation does support limited commercial and institutional uses, just as the residential zoning does. So here we see the zoning map. The property is R10. The site plan complies with all of our requirements, with the exception of a pedestrian connection from front door to the frontage along Holly Springs New Hill Road, for which they have requested a waiver. The applicant could speak to that in a minute. Landscaping has been provided to meet all of our requirements, and alternate landscaping request has been made to essentially move their north buffer from the north property line, this is all wooded up here, to basically just bring their buffer down to the edge of the woods and retain all the woods that are up there. Property is adjacent to residential below this line. So there's a heavier buffer over here than you would see in the north, north side of that line, where it's industrial zoning. And then to the west is the Hensley subdivision I was talking about. This would be a connection made to that subdivision where they've shown on their site plans. The street trees chosen for this dedicated public roadway would be matching those in the Hensley subdivision, so you'd have that kind of continuity through there with the So you see the school in the center of the site. This is their turf play area just to the north. Elevations meet all of our architecture and design requirements. The, with the exception of the height exceeding our 35-foot maximum, exceeding it by four inches. And they've requested a variance for that to change the requirement to 35 feet and five inches. I guess gives themselves a little wiggle room. And that is seen at this point, so... If you'd like to hear from Elizabeth?
Absolutely.
Always.
Meetings would not be complete without her.
That's quite correct, fair to pretend.
Glad to share a little bit of the update on what is going on with engineering side of the requirements. For this site, we do have an existing water line along New Hill Road, and so this site's just tying into the existing 12-inch line. The sewer for this site will require an extension through the Hensley subdivision and extending on through to this site. So there is a portion that is not constructed at this time, but is expected that if Hensley continues, that that will be available to this project at their property line. A traffic study was completed for this project, and on-site requirements were incorporated into their plans. There are a couple of off-site improvements that came out of that study. One was the Green Oaks Parkway and New Hill Road intersection. That signal at that intersection, there is an impact from this site on that signal. The way we've handled it for a few other projects, and that we will handle it for this one as well, is to collect a fee proportionate to the impact that this project has on that intersection. And at the time that the signal is warranted, that, that money would be available to put the signal in. In addition to that, this project has committed to doing the signal warrant analysis to see if we're at that threshold now. If it is not met before the school opens, they will run that same analysis after the school opens. So there's a couple of different commitments to that, to try and address the need for families to be able to get to and from the schools that are along this road. In addition to that, there are road improvements along the frontage, as we typically see. This is four-lane median divided. This is a project that is showing the half of the median extended, as we've been seeing along New Hill Road. The project is connecting to Hensley through a street stub here, and this will be a public street with a break in the access, a break in the median, so lefts will be allowed in and out through this access point. There is a, I skipped over one item. There is a current town pump station, a very small old pump station, one of the original pump stations the town had, the New Hill Road pump station, that is anticipated will be impacted by the road improvements for this project. And the developer is working with the town to enter into maybe a developer agreement, an infrastructure reimbursement agreement, in order to facilitate that pump station coming offline and being able to, it will be, able to be served gravity through this site, so we can begin to make steps towards removing that pump station. So that will likely come back to you in a later meeting. Then from the environmental side, it's pretty straightforward. This is in the Cape Fear River Basin and is subject to our town's NPDS Phase II post-construction stormwater ordinance, and that would be the stormwater device that you see on the plan. Any questions?
Questions to Elizabeth? At this point?
Bypass.
I'm sorry, that was the second improvement that was required, off-site requirement. The signal was one, and there is an additional through lane on the bypass that is needed. This project has a small percentage of the impact of that lane, but it is an improvement that will be needed to extend a third lane northbound, right around the New Hill Road 55 intersection. So it's pretty much from U-turn to U-turn is about the limits of it. They are going to be paying a fee proportionate to their impact that will be able to be available when that improvement can be constructed in the future. And I know that there are traffic engineers here if there's more detailed questions on that specifics of those items.
Elizabeth, is it just one way in and one way out into, into the project? Is that what I'm seeing?
So that it's one street in, but it will connect through. The Hensley subdivision would be a secondary way, but yes, this is one way in, one way out.
Okay. But the, most of the traffic will probably be coming off of New Hill Road into the subdivision and into the, to the school, circulating around and then, then heading back out onto the road versus into the adjacent.
Correct.
So the median that is to the left of the school, in front of the school, how, does it impact entrance and egress into Hensley to a certain degree?
This does not, Hensley is on this side of the project. Hensley will be extending their road improvements, and there will need to be a left turn lane constructed here to be able to accommodate this new driveway.
So with, with the Hensley improvements or the expansion of Hensley, their additional entrance into the subdivision will be in, in front of that median, so that residents would typically have to go out?
Hensley does have a full access point further down.
Right.
The one closest to this side will be right in, right out. And then this would be a full access and would be available to the residents of Hensley if they so chose.
Now, how far is it? I kind of recall that roughly.
1,200 feet, give or take.
1,200 feet's the spacing between the breaks. I don't remember exactly how far the spacing is between the other right in, right out.
Do we have any rule of regulation in terms of how many entrance points to subdivisions or schools or whatnot in the spacing?
We do have requirements about how many entrances are needed for residential subdivisions. It's based off a threshold of number of lots. For a school, it's not uncommon to have one entrance with a loop around the school.
Is there minimum spacing between entrances to adjacent parcels? Like, so Hensley will have two entrances, I think, and the additional one in front of Thales. I'm just curious what the, what the...
There would be allowed to be another, I assume you're asking this direction back towards the intersection with Old Holly Springs Apex Road, or is that, just in general, either direction?
General flow of traffic, if we're having a lot of exit points and possible entrance points?
So anything that's within that 1,200 feet of that access point that's the full would be right in, right out. There is a spacing that you like to see, several hundred feet away from a driveway that another intersection would be. There's a difference between streets and driveways, the spacing that's needed. This is a street. Driveways for individual projects, we try and encourage shared drives and interconnectivity when we can to minimize how many of those curb cuts there are.
Will the school be responsible for the lighting across the, that street there, the main street there?
They are responsible for their road improvements along their entire frontage, which includes the two lanes on the north side plus a turn lane to turn into their site, the curb and gutter, sidewalk, and right-of-way dedication.
What I'm talking about is the road going in?
This road, yes. They are responsible for that road as well.
Would this impact the speed limit in that area, either during school hours or otherwise?
I don't know if a private school would affect school zone type hours. I know that we have... I know that we have that for Oakview further down. The applicant may be able to speak to that, I'm not familiar myself with that, we can track it down.
That's a good question. I think it does, but I don't want to speak for that. Do you know? The ones I've seen have. Yeah, I know, yeah, okay. All right, you want to bring the applicant up at this point? Or is there some more questions for Elizabeth?
I had one more thing that?
Sure. Elizabeth, I wanted to get to some planning board discussions.
Oh yeah, we will.
So the only other thing that I failed to mention before was the waiver request for second-story glazing. The requirement is to provide 15%. On their plans, they've provided 14.7. They have exceeded the requirement on the lower level, and that is what that waiver is about, is for the second floor.
What about the planning board? It looked like they had quite extensive discussions as it related to some concerns.
The pedestrian access?
Yes.
Yeah.
Enlighten us. What do you mean, what were their discussions centered on? Were they concerned that they needed to be, that the lack, the lack of it was a problem?
Yeah, I mean, we would request that, well, the ordinance requests that the, a safe, you know, passage sidewalk be connected from the front door of the building to each street frontage. The pathway shown on their plans takes you out, up, over, down, and then over to here if you were walking from this side and wanted to access the building.
Those people are just going to cut across.
Yeah.
I mean, be real.
There was discussion, Matt, I think, about having a shortcut a bit on the, just as you round that curve to head up, did anything come of that?
No, I mean, it was never included in any motion for them to make changes. They did not volunteer to make changes.
So after discussion, the planning board voted 8-0-1, 8-0-1 on both issues, am I correct?
Correct.
Anything else from Matt? Bring the applicant up? Yes, please. Would the applicant come up, please? Introduce yourself, and we got some questions for you. You also were handed out, I think, a brochure, am I correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Beth Trejo's. I'm an attorney with Smithmore Leatherwood, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Thales Academy to request your support for the Thales project here in Holly Springs. What I handed out to you is a component piece of our appraisers' presentation. It is a report showing no negative impact on adjacent property values from the construction of a school at this location. And we would ask that you include that in your record along with the staff report and other materials that have been provided to you. Recognizing that you have already have, had, and continue to have a long agenda, we're going to try to make a succinct presentation to you on the 20-some findings of fact that are associated with the special exception permit, the waivers, and the variance application. At any time, if you have questions, please interrupt. You know, as we have our experts up here, we would, we would like to answer any questions you have. I want, I want to thank your staff for the wonderful work that they have done. They have seen a lot of me over the past few weeks and the rest of our team, and we appreciate their willingness to work with us and to make a thorough presentation covering many of the issues that we would have otherwise spoken to. So just to make sure the request is clear, we are requesting the special exception permit. We're requesting an architectural waiver for just 0.3%, which is really the difference between 45, 455 square feet of window and 466 square feet of window, 11 feet difference for the architectural waiver. We are requesting a pedestrian access waiver. We think, in our, our landscape architect and engineers will speak to you about this, but there is a significant grade change from the front of the site to the school. It falls 17 feet. And so if we're to build a sidewalk that meets the ADA requirements, it would be a switchback sidewalk that would go across the front of the property. Every kid with a bike and a skateboard is going to ride down that thing. It is going to be an attractive nuisance and a safety risk for the school. In our discussions with the planning board, we looked at opportunities for alternate locations. There is an existing, or there is a planned sidewalk here with a connection to the sidewalk that runs on both sides of the public street that we're building. The grade continues to be an issue. Also, the significant landscaping that's required under your code would provide an issue. Essentially, we'd have to build steps at that location. So ultimately, what the planning board recommended is that the, this access is sufficient, and we hope that you will, will support that, and our engineers will speak to you in more detail about the actual design. We are also requesting a variance for the height. Again, the grade change is significant, such that the building will appear much shorter from the street than it is. In addition, they are using a building, a Thales building that they have used in other locations that fits their needs very well, that we believe and hope that you will find is attractive. It includes a parapet wall that is something that is encouraged in your architectural and site design requirements, and it just exceeds your height requirement by four inches. And so we would ask for your support. I know the, the planning board discussed it, I know they don't officially weigh in, but unofficially, there were some very positive comments made about the design, and we hope that you will support that. So given the questions that you asked, I first would like to call Mr. Travis, Travis Fluit, who is our traffic engineer with Kim Lee Horn, and have him speak to you very briefly about the work that he did in support of this project.
And again, please repeat your name and address, please, Travis.
Travis Fluit with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina with over 13 years of experience, and I perform the traffic impact analysis for this site. Elizabeth's covered most of this, so I'll be very brief. Our study went from, including New Hill Road going from Green Oaks Parkway over to the bypass and the U-turns on either side of New Hill Road, Holly Springs Road. The TIA was scoped through the town and DOT assumptions and analysis were reviewed and approved by town staff and NC DOT. And as Elizabeth said, they committed improvements for this development. And in addition to the thoroughfare widening on New Hill Road, we have the left and right turn lanes on New Hill Road into the new public street beside access, as well as our commitment to perform signal warrant analyses at the intersection of New Hill Road and Green Oaks Parkway, and then to provide a payment in lieu for our proportionate share for the cost of that signal, as well as the payment in lieu for the proportionate share of the additional northbound through lane on the NC 55 bypass. It's approximately 3,500 linear feet of widening on the bypass.
And just briefly, is it your professional opinion that, given the proposed improvements in the site design, that the site is safe and that it, that it is sufficient in size and properly located to ensure automotive and pedestrian safety?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any questions at this point?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, before you leave, just one little point of cross-examination, if you would, and I hate to do it, because nothing's adversarial here, but the opinion that you just stated is prefaced on the payment in lieu and everything that you've discussed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll call Mr. Christopher Miller. Mr. Miller is the landscape architect who has been the lead designer on this project, and he is, he works for Stewart.
Name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Hello. My name is Christopher Miller. I'm a landscape architect with Stewart, 421 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. And as Beth mentioned, I've kind of led the overall site design. We're looking at about 11 acres here. Thales Academy is fronting on New Hill Road, but also we're building a new public street, a new town street coming in. So our actual driveway is on your new town street. From New Hill Road, it's actually 17 feet down to try to balance the site as this grade change comes all the way down to the back where the, the old dump was back there. We are providing the connection into Hensley subdivision, and generally, the building is set back generously from all property lines, and including, like we, Matt had mentioned in the beginning, significant tree stand to the north. The pedestrian access is provided down the new, the new street and around to the front door. I guess I could point with this, excuse me. So, so the new street has sidewalks on both sides with connections into the Hensley subdivision, including a crosswalk here and a crosswalk here down across to the front door. So again, to reiterate what Beth said regarding the attractive nuisance, providing a sidewalk connection from New Hill Road down, we think that there's an attractive nuisance about providing that switchback right to the front door and just the ongoing security with the students and the long-term maintenance of that and the upkeep with the landscaping in that position. There's another opportunity to put another pedestrian access over here on the side. As Beth pointed out, that's again on a, on a slope that would require some stairs, so we could provide that as a more direct access, not directly from New Hill, but again, it would be from the side. But accessible access would be down and around to the front door that way.
And there's no opportunity on the, this side of the property, the shopping center, the opposite side, right where you've got your air, that there's the grate, there's the grates terrible there also?
It's, it's, it gets better, but it's still a similar situation with a three-to-one slope down to the site.
Okay. What will the, the slope consist of? The reason I ask is, I, this kind of reminds me of Holly Glen, Holly Grove Elementary School where the entrance is over on the side. Again, you, the sidewalk snakes around, but kids are constantly, that walk to school, run down that hill right to the grass. So I didn't know if that's going to be a safety problem for, are people going to be able to cut through, and what will happen when they do?
Yeah, I think our intent is to have it fully landscaped, and that, the other, the other point to make about people walking to school is the Hensley subdivision is immediately to the west, and, you know, their connection, if you look at where they're coming in, most of the people that live there will walk through the neighborhood streets and would actually come in from this new location. The Holly Springs New Hill Road connects to Target and the Commercial Center and down out along the four-lane median divided, so, and also being a pre-K through fifth grade, I mean, that's 10 years old max age. So typically accompanied by an adult. I know when I bring my kid to school, she doesn't walk there by herself. So again, we just think that most people, if they are walking to school, are coming from the back, but typically, they're, you know, accompanied by an adult in this type of school.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
I'll call Mr. Rich Kirkland. Mr. Kirkland provided the report that you have, and he is an MAI-certified real estate appraiser.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Rich Kirkland, 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina. Again, I was just asked to look at this site, the proposed Thales site, to see if it would have any impact on adjoining property values. I've done impact studies for a variety of uses. I've looked at school sites before, actually regularly appraised sites for the Wake County Public School System. And research, I believe you've got the package out there, it shows that there's no impact that I can find on adjoining property values associated with a private school. I can further say that looking at public schools, I've also not seen such issues. Again, it actually tends to have the reverse, whenever I appraise a site for the Wake County Public School System, you go out later and look, see where they're building it, their subdivision, they're being built all around it at the same time. So it's, in my professional opinion, this will have no impact on the adjoining property values.
Questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll call Mr. Joe Armstead, who is the architect in the building, to speak with you. I think he has some pictures of existing Thales buildings, so you can really see the differentiation in the brick. And I will, I'll be Vienna for.
And again, name and address, please, Joe.
Joe Armstead, 3206 Heritage Trade Drive, Suite 112, Wake Forest. As I said, good evening, I'm Joe Armstead with Baxter Armstead Architecture, 24 years experience in architectural profession, and have been a registered architect in the state of North Carolina since 2002. My office has worked with Thales for approximately 10 years, working on and establishing their K5 facility that we have here tonight. We believe in that timeframe that it's, it's, excuse me, let me back up, it's built in several locations around the triangle, and in that timeframe, we believe that we've established a visually appealing facility that not only meets the school's needs, but fits with the local communities. And do you want to? We just set them up about here?
Where's the other locations again? Knightdale is one, right? That's the one I remembered, okay. I've been to that one. Yes, sir. Yeah, okay.
And again, there's nothing better than a, a full-scale 3D version as opposed to looking at the two-dimensional elevations.
So if I could get you to comment briefly on, can you just talk about the, the building design and the bit that exceeds the 35-foot maximum height requirement?
Yes, we obviously vary the height of the parapets, one to meet the ordinances for not having one continuous wall plane, one continuous roof line, but it also is, helps to screen the rooftop mechanical units.
And can you talk about how the building will appear from the street, given the grade change?
Well, obviously, it will appear much shorter if you're, I believe our finished floor, from finished floor to the second finished floor is 16 feet, so that's approximately just shy of the height of the street frontage. You'll be driving by at the second floor.
And the facility, all of the requirements, all the necessary services and equipment, restrooms, facilities, safety equipment, et cetera, are included within the design?
Of course. As I said before, we have it in multiple locations. The school knows, you know, their operational requirements, they are up and operating, like I said, over the last eight to 10 years. I will point out that there is no cafeteria in this facility, there's no lunchroom. The meals are catered in, and children, or students eat in their classrooms.
Is that unusual? I've never heard of that before, but I can believe it.
My kids go to a charter school, and that's, that's how they do it.
Yeah, some private schools do.
Okay.
Like everyday silent lunch.
If you've ever been a lunch parent, it's not silent. At least not at my kid's school, not in the younger grade.
Are you guys putting in a basketball court, any chance, inside?
Basketball court now.
Anything else?
Not in the building. They may have a hoop on the playground.
What would be the capacity of the, of the school?
450 students.
How many employees?
We're going to have a representative from Thales come up next, but my belief is 30 staff members. The building is just over 31,000 square feet.
Just shy of 16,000 per floor.
Two stories.
Two stories, obviously.
I think we got that one, okay.
Mr. Mayor, one final witness for you, if there are no other questions.
Any other questions? Well, I had one. You said the number of students were 450. Grades incorporated in that would be from what to what?
Kindergarten to fifth.
K to five.
K to five? I missed that, okay, K to five, thank you. Any more? Good? I thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One final witness, Dr. Hall, who is the head of school for Thales. One final witness, Dr. Hall, who is the head of school for Thales, just to give you some information in the flavor of the Thales Academy.
Dr. Timothy Hall, sixty-five twenty Willalon Drive, Wake Forest, North Carolina. I'm the Director of Operations and Academics at Thales Academy. Some of you might want to know what Thales is about. We're about high-quality, affordable-cost education, private education, not-for-profit. And we're a chain school, we have six schools across the triad area. So, and one thing to note, I mean, before you, we're a classical school. And most people associate classical school with old and stuffy, but if you look at our growth in the past two years, you'll see that we're not. We've added two schools in the past few years and a thousand students across our six campuses. So, we're having explosive growth. People like what they have at Thales Academy. So, just to give you some components of our curriculum, first off, we, we have direct instruction, pre-K through the fifth grade. We have Craig Dialogues, grades six through twelve. We also have a high emphasis on technology. iPads are in our high schools, digital citizenship, K-12 standards. In addition, we have a special program, a pre-engineering elective called LIT, Light Institute of Technology, which is a STEM program that we have in, in our school as well. So, we do have a STEM focus, also a classical focus as well. What makes us classical in general is there, there's several key components, but one is Latin. They take Latin starting in the sixth grade all the way through the twelfth grade. Good stuff.
It is good stuff, yes.
It's good stuff. It teaches them a lot about logic, it also teaches them about the font of Western civilization, which is the Romans and the Romance languages. In addition, they take a series of scope and sequence of Trivium. Trivium allows them to learn how to learn informal logic, informal logic, and then go up to rhetoric and be able to put that all together to develop strong arguments. Finally, we talk about Western tradition. We're talking about the Greeks and the Romans and starting in the sixth grade and move all the way through up to American tradition through the twelfth grade. We couple that with our literature and history classes, so they get a good understanding of where they are in the Western culture.
Ever since I've visited, had a playground on the edge or the outside, does this have a playground?
Which one? At Raleigh, I think you said you saw, yeah.
Does this have the same kind of a situation or not?
I think they had set up a.
Just curious, I don't.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I see, is that the track? Oh, I see it, okay. Yeah. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Is there, do you have any plans to expand to six to twelve in this location?
No, not at this time.
And how many, and would you say the class size? So, how many per grade do you think, K through five?
K through five, four hundred to four fifty.
What, what hours of operation and will it open at full capacity?
Will not open at full capacity. Typically, we start about maybe a hundred students and we start maybe pre-K, well kindergarten through the second grade is normally where you kind of are able to enroll people and then you move up and progress grade by grade upwards. Most people don't want to take a chance coming to new school in the fifth or fourth grade. It's just hard to, to gain enrollment in those grades.
What, what start time and?
Start time is about seven fifteen and it's about two fifty.
And no buses, just all?
No buses, carpool.
We had a question about the number of staff. I said thirty, was that right?
Correct, thirty, thirty staff and, and just looking at the economic impact, think about this, I mean, you have thirty staff, they had to make about an average of forty-five thousand dollars apiece to bring you into your community. In addition, if you read the, a study by Dr. Bart Danielson of NC State, he talks about how schools, good schools, like Thales, which we are a good school, bring economic action because what happens is families move towards the school, so they'll move towards Thales.
And so, with right now not thinking about expanding, where would these students end up usually going to middle school?
So, we have a junior high high school in Apex, which is twelve minutes away. So, they're ready for that, yeah. So, that's part of the, the process. We usually like to have two feeder schools into our junior high, high, junior high high schools. So, and we have two of those, one in Roseville and one in Apex.
And the retention, or for the children that do go on to stay at Thales Middle School, what percent is that? And the reason I'm asking this is, you know, the shortage of schools that Wake County has, they don't seem to be building too many middle schools. So, that would be my concern of where these, how many of these kids will go on to your Thales location?
Retention's very high. I'll tell you about Roseville School. We have a hundred and fifty sixth graders that came in, more than what, that's actually more than what's coming in from our Raleigh campus and our Wake Forest campus. So, we have people who are coming to Thales. They, they very much believe in the brand that we're providing.
This might be a question more for the traffic engineer, but if you're committed to do a signal analysis when the school is open, but you're opening at not full capacity, that seems to skew the results?
That, that would be a question for someone else.
Good answer. You don't have to reintroduce yourself as someone else either.
I, I think we just need to work with staff to find a threshold at which the occupancy is high enough, you know? If it takes them four or five years, we may not want to wait that long, but find an appropriate threshold to do the warrant analysis if it doesn't, if it's not met before the school opens.
And we have looked at it. I'm, I'm hopeful, but I think it probably will warrant it. It was already sort of questionable like a year or two ago when we looked at it. So, with Oak View opening up and then with Trinity, once people start moving in there, I feel like that it'll be warranted.
Be a lot more traffic volume.
Are you, do you know what the answer is to the speed limit? Will that be a school zone? Is there a school zone?
I do not.
Okay, I just wanted, sure we'll find out.
Do you remember about the other schools? I don't remember either.
I, I would say.
Mr. Roach, this is Michael Roach, who is also sworn in at Thales.
Okay.
Well, good.
Good transition.
Question about speed limits, and again, name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Michael Roach with Thales Academy, four-six-four-one Paragon Park Road, Raleigh. This, I, I'm the Director of Development for Thales, so I go out and go through this process for each location. We've actually ran across that in our location that we're working on near Charlotte, Waxahaw, North Carolina. And that is something that DOT has the authority to put in a speed limit if they want or not. And generally, how it was explained to us, at least for Waxahaw, is they are not going to start out with a lower speed limit. If there is issues, they'll visit that and they'll, they can put in a, a school's speed limit.
Do you remember who you work with at DOT?
That is, the one down there in Charlotte was.
I mean, up here, have you ever worked with?
Oh, up here, in the past, we've worked with Reed Elmore.
Okay, we know.
And then, yeah.
We're going to have the Secretary down very soon, so maybe we can ask that question.
Straight to the top, I like it.
That's right, that's right.
Do your, the reason we ask is we're talking about, you know, you have a school zone, then we not have a school zone, then we have a school zone, you know, is it going to be consistent? As you said, across the board. So, that's the reason we're just trying to figure that out.
And DOT's dealt with this in the past. They, they generally come up with a, a good plan and it, it's not necessarily have to be straight by the book. They'll look at the site and see what makes sense. At, at least that's the experience I've had with them. May I make one comment? You mentioned about the, the students going to the Apex Middle School. Currently, we have over a hundred and twenty Holly Springs residents that go to our Apex School, so are from kindergarten through twelfth grade. So, I mean, I, I do not see an issue of them being stranded.
Right, right.
Although, we, we are open to looking at the possibility of, of doing a junior high around this area if it warrants it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Beth?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm just with that expert testimony, we would submit that we have met all of the required findings and ask please for your support of the four items that are before you tonight. Thank you.
Sound like an attorney. Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Anything else, Matt? Before we go to the public hearing?
I had nothing else to add, no.
All right, we have several people that have signed up. Couple of them, I suspect, might be with this same company. So, I'll ask Adam Pike for starters, Adam Pike? With you, right? So, I can. Any questions for him, we'll bring him up? Think we're good? We're good. You're off the hook, Adam. Thank you. Let's see, is there anybody else here on this? He's from Youngsville. Is that the, is that the troops? Okay, all right, then we're good. Thank you again, appreciate it. All right, let's go to. Oh, that's gone, that's gone. How about Dan Poland? Am I correct? Anything to add to that, Dan Poland? All right, thank you. Yeah, big group. Covered that one, so we're good. I guess we're all good then with the public hearings. At this point in time, we'll close the public hearing. Further discussion, board?
Well, I don't have issue with the, the height waiver, the extra couple of inches. Don't have any issue with the, the glazing.
Right.
Way we've been looking at. I do have an issue with the, with the access from, from the sidewalk. I would like to see, even if they have to put in stairs, I'd like to see access from the sidewalk to the, the front of the building.
I agree.
Stair, stair access?
Straight up, straight up front or even off to the side?
I mean, even, even off to the side's okay, but, yeah, a little bit more so they're not having to leave their way.
Yeah, I think even to the east of Thales, there'll be, there could be apartments and even more pedestrian access.
We got any reaction on that? We don't normally do it this way, but we might as well. Steps?
You, you, you need to find as a fact that they haven't met the findings of fact with respect to the access. And, and given that the public hearing, you did close the public hearing, you know.
That's true.
Sort of, you know, you, you could just.
Reopen the public hearing?
Well, you, you could if you think there's going to be more facts, you know, but if, if you've heard all the facts and it's your opinion that they haven't met their burden to prove that they're not entitled to the waiver for the access issue.
I'm only one person, it wouldn't change my mind.
It would or would not?
Would not. If they got a second chance. But I'm only one.
Clarify. Yeah, clarify, because I'm, yeah, I'm confused.
If they were to come back up there and submit more evidence.
Okay, finding effective, okay.
It would not change my mind.
Okay.
I'm certain it would not change my mind. I want, I'd like to see a side, I mean, the access from the sidewalk to the front of the building.
Is Wake Forest all this?
Well, I, I think you just, you, you rule on all the other waivers and then you take a vote, you know, I'd suggest you go through.
So, motion, you could, you could, motion two looks like it's the one for the waiver of the architectural designs and waiver of pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design requirements. That's the one that deals with the sidewalk, correct?
That's correct.
So, one, variance in development standards, three, special exception use in development plan, four, those would be not impacted by us having concerns about number two.
One would be.
Am I reading that correctly?
Motion one would be the one.
Yes, motion one is, has all the findings of fact.
Has all the findings of fact, okay, sorry.
So, you would change that.
You change one, you change one, two, two to the sidewalk, three and four are not a problem.
One is the findings of fact for all of them.
For all of them, right.
So, you would change that, you would deny that.
Or strike out the one.
Or strike it out.
Pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design requirements. You'd strike that from number one, you'd rule on the others. I mean, if you, if you, if you make the findings of fact in motion number one, then, you know, the, the rest are sort of perfunctory because you, you know, you, you've stated that they've made their burden, you found all the facts and then you just go forward.
Motion number one, you would strike the part that says, and the waiver of pedestrian circulation and vehicle area design, seven WAV-ten, you take that part out of motion number one?
If that's the, I think this board has to vote.
That's where we're heading.
That's right. I think the board has to vote on, on the waiver of the pedestrian. That seems to be the only thing, so I think you need to just take a vote on that.
What kind of motion would you need, Counselor?
About that resolution, striking that phrase.
I think that five of you need to vote on whether or not they've met their burden or not with respect to the findings of fact for the waiver of the vehicular and pedestrian access issue.
Let me go ahead and you just stop me where, where I need to stop.
And that's more, that's more in the discussion phase right now. We would internally vote, decide that, that's where we want to be and then move on to the motion phase, is that what I'm, is that?
What you have right now is, is one council member that says they have met their burden.
Yeah, you got more than one.
Yeah.
All right, so I would, you know.
I think you have pretty much a.
All the people, all the people who feel that they have not met their burden for the vehicular access waiver requirement, raise your hand. Okay.
All of them.
So, then that's a unanimous vote and the record reflect that that would have been a unanimous vote, so that you would then move on suggested motion number one, striking the findings of fact with respect to the pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design requirements.
Okay. And then motion two, would that be, would there be? Well, sure, let's, let's do that one first and then we'll tweak the cycle.
Got it.
Is it legit to bring the Counselor back? She has a point to make.
You want to reopen the public?
I'll reopen the public hearing. Yes, Counselor?
Mr. Mayor and the Counselor, if you not the waiver for pedestrian access, that would be not the need to, to the outside and the public process. And ultimately, we would, perhaps a petition to the special exception comment that might allow stairway access along, connecting to the sidewalk, along the public street. Would that be acceptable to you? Thales is hoping to begin construction, red hot and successful, through the design assessment. A month delay, to conduct, perhaps longer, conduct the process. Do you feel there would be that, that, with that open, would be acceptable to you? Perhaps you could be petition on the special.
Hank? Counselor?
Is that the, the sidewalk they talked about, that you mentioned in the beginning?
We're talking about a sidewalk along, coming off the main highway, main road of New Hill.
Can we go back to the, yeah?
Yep.
I'd like to see that.
There you are.
So, we're, we're building a sidewalk along the frontage.
Right.
And then, then the sidewalk here. What we had discussed with the planning board as perhaps an alternative would be to put, put a connection here that includes, included stairs, so it would be a more direct access. It, and I can bring the engineers forward, but the, the construction of a sidewalk here, given the grade, is going to be extremely difficult. It will take a large portion of the frontage going back and forth to make that connection. If, if, if this would be an acceptable alternative with stairs, they could construct that. And, and Mike, I don't know if you want to come forward and, and talk about? that, um, and, and Mike, I don't know if you want to come forward and, and talk a little
We, uh, we did have quite a discussion with planning board regarding this. We do have, uh, a major concern doing either stairs straight down here or, or doing switchbacks back and forth. Uh, one, safety, um, you get large stairs going down there and kindergarteners walking down there. That's, that's a big deal. As far as security goes, um, we're concerned with people riding skateboards, bikes, um, down these areas, not going to the school, but going there for fun and, and excitement. Um, our, what we're unsure about is how much use this would be from the school, um, it, from the, uh, the...
Surrounding areas.
Yeah, surrounding areas, um, we don't see much access walking in...
On either side. And there is another neighborhood up on the other side, the Forest Springs neighborhoods up there. I don't know how many would walk from there, but that is a consideration.
Just in terms of the required findings of fact for this particular waiver, um, the first is that the proposed pedestrian circulation and vehicle area design will result in a development pattern which is equivalent to or superior to that achievable under the applicable regulations. And we did submit to you in our written application that the access that we're providing is equivalent. It is, there is a safe path to walk, um, uh, to the school, whichever direction you arrive from. And I, my observation as a parent of an elementary school student is, nobody walks to school anymore. But it, there is sufficient ability for them to do so. The second finding is that the proposed development will be compatible with and will enhance the use or value of area properties, and our appraiser indicated to you that schools are commonly found in neighborhoods such as this. There's a significant amount of sidewalk connection being made, particularly into the immediately adjacent single-family subdivision, which is the most likely supplier of students. Um, the third is that the proposed development is consistent with the intent of the comp plan. Planning staff has said that the school itself is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We think the, the access design complements that. Again, it is, um, provides for easy pedestrian and vehicular access, perhaps not the most direct route, but the safest route. Um, and that the proposed development is consistent with the intent and purposes of the UDO. The intent is, is to allow schools within the residential district, this is a compatible use, there's a school down the street, um, you know, we think that the requirements of the waiver have been met with substantial competent material evidence, um, and we would ask for your support of the waiver or an alternative condition to the special exception permit that would allow Thales to go forward, um, so that they can start welcoming students from Holly Springs next year.
I'll just say, I mean, my concern is, I do, I, I, my kids have gone to Holly Grove Elementary School for, since it opened, um, and living right there, I see kids do walk to school quite a bit. Parents will tend to drop them off at the corner and then they run down that, that grade, um, and jump on the sidewalk to go to the front of the school. This is a little bit different, because it's surrounded by the carpool, we're surrounded by cars. So I'm just asking, really keep in mind the safety, 'cause people tend, especially fifth graders, parents will walk them right there, "I see the school, you go ahead and go down." You know, it happens, even though we say we wouldn't do it, it does happen. So that's, that's a big concern.
Right, and I think that would be something that could be put in the handbook, that would be direction to parents that students are to be brought, either walked into the front door or to be driven.
And that's something that we do have full control over. If, uh, if we see a, a parent dropping a kid off and they run down there, we're going to have a conversation with the, uh, parent, and if they choose to continue to do that, then we may choose to ask them not to come back. So we do have full control over that.
Mm-hmm.
So did we decide about any, any other? So, I'm just asking, was, you know, they've offered the...
See, for me, it's, uh, I'm, I'm not looking at the current condition, I'm, we just don't know what the future condition is, and I don't want to be in a position where someone says, why is there, why didn't you approve a, or didn't, why did you require, uh, access from, from the sidewalk? So I'm looking ahead.
Anything else for the applicants?
No, I mean, I, I got your point, where, you know, from a safety perspective, when first graders and second graders, when they get out of school, that they see an access point where they can run up steps, um, you know, uh, from a safety standpoint, I, I understand why you're, you're looking at that. But if we could, uh, build steps to, uh, the left of the building coming in, I, I'd like to see that as another access for people that are coming, yes, right down there, yep. That's my take on that.
I'm satisfied with that, that condition.
Yeah, I, I just think at least one access would be good. I'm still concerned that the, all surrounded by the carpool lane, there's just no way that the kids will be able to avoid crossing that are walking. That, that's a big concern, but I think at least the one stairwell.
We would be happy to accept that as a condition on the special exception permit.
All right. Anything else? All right, we'll close the public hearing again.
Thank you.
Thank you again, again.
Well, safety first.
That's right, we understand. Let's go to the motions.
They read this motion.
Yeah, how do you read that?
I think...
So as...
I'll have to add...
As a point of clarification, it, it would be a condition on the development plan, not on the special exception use, 'cause the special exception use is to put a school on the property.
Good point, yeah.
You're, you're gonna add in suggested motion number four, the development plan conditions, you're gonna add, uh, seven, paragraph seven, but before we get to four, we gotta get to one, and one's gonna say, um, that you're gonna, uh, you're gonna make a motion to make the fi, the findings of fact that they've met the requirements forward, um, subject to the, um, completion of the development plan conditions outlined in suggested motion number four, which will now include number seven, the stairs.
So that's gonna be at the end of, after, as specified in exhibit A, with the conditions that Joni's going to...
When we get to four, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna make a motion to add a, a new paragraph with respect to the stairs.
But there's no tweaking, you need to do on the motion number one?
Number one, I, I think needs to say that you, um, you're making a motion to adopt this resolution, making the findings of fact that are met, subject to the completion of all the development plan conditions contained in the next, the, the development plan conditions.
Write that fast. Joni's got it.
Joni's got it.
Joni's got it.
And the remainder of that paragraph...
You got it?
Verbatim.
In the resolution for, that, that is referenced, seventeen thirty-one, exhibit D talks about adding additional conditions to any of the waivers, so you'll want to add as a condition in exhibit D to waiver seventeen, WAV-ten, the condition that they amend the development plan, and that's how we'll capture it in the, the actual resolution that you adopt.
I don't know how to even bring it up.
They so moved.
Yeah.
Just say, yeah.
Did you change anything?
As printed on the screen, plus what our town clerk passed.
We didn't change the motion yet.
It's just, subject to completion of item number four.
Try that.
Yeah, we can try it out.
See if that works.
Why don't you do it?
No.
Oh, yeah, we need a CPA for this.
Okay, no, no.
Hey, do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Not me. Tom's gonna do it.
Correct me, or advise me.
I, Tom, you're on.
Motion to adopt resolution number seventeen dash thirty-one, making and accepting the findings of fact to be recorded in the minutes for special exception use seventeen dash SEU dash zero-two. Variants of a development standard seventeen dash VARTC dash zero-three, waiver of architectural design requirements seventeen dash WAV-zero-nine, and waiver of a pedestrian circulation and vehicular, I'm sorry, vehicular, area design requirements seventeen dash WAV-dash-ten for Thales Academy to allow for a school in the R-ten residential district as submitted by Stewart, Inc., as specified in exhibit A, subject to completion, uh, ED seventeen, uh, section four.
Correct?
Good.
Most been made, do a hair second.
Second.
Most been made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One nay. Okay, number two.
Motion to approve waivers of UDO section three point oh-eight, alternate compliance with architectural and site design requirements seventeen dash WAV-dash-oh-nine, and waiver of regulations of UDO section seven point oh-nine, waiver of pedestrian circulation and vehicular area design requirements in association with development petition number seventeen dash DP dash oh-four for Thales Academy as submitted by Stewart, Inc.
Second.
Been made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One nay. Number three.
Motion to approve variance petition seventeen VARTC-oh-three, a variance for, from the Unified Development Ordinance, section two dot oh-four B-seven, R-ten residential district, maximum building height, to allow an increase in building height from thirty-five feet to thirty-five feet and five inches, as submitted by Stewart Incorporated.
Second.
Most been made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number four.
Motion to approve special exception use number seventeen dash SEU dash zero-two, as specified in Unified Development Ordinance, section two dot zero-four, R-ten residential district, to allow for a school in the R-ten residential district in development plan seventeen dash DP dash zero-four for Thales Academy at one-one-two-four-four Holly Springs, New Hill Road, as submitted by Stewart, Inc., project number one-seven-zero-two-five, dated revised six-nineteen twenty-seventeen, with the following conditions as specified on the screen. Second.
With the addition...
Seven.
With addition of number seven.
Got it.
Second.
Motion been made, second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great school, I like the one that I visited a couple times, so, just want to mention, I'll do mention that later. Okay, thank you.
Latin was your first language, wasn't it, Mayor?
Well, I pull cry a mama son, yes. You didn't think I knew that, did you?
Really?
Agenda item seven A, consent agenda, unless I missed something.
Seven C. Seven C, Wright House.
I did, didn't I? Here we go. Agenda item seven C, public hearing seventeen SEU-oh-three, oh-seven, DP-oh-eight, AO-two, seventeen VAR-oh-one, seventeen VAR-oh-two, the Wright House. Sean Ryan.
All right.
And Elizabeth, maybe.
Possibly. All right, good evening, everybody. Uh, this case is for, uh, the Wright House redevelopment project located just behind Town Hall over at one-oh-two Avant Ferry Road. Uh, the request is for a special exception use, uh, two variances and, uh, several waivers, and all of those are really related to the architecture of the building, so that, uh, the proposed structure and the addition can mimic the, uh, current architecture of the Wright House that exists over there today. This is in our town village, our downtown zoning district, um, and all projects in the town village zoning district do require special exception use, and that gives town council the ability to review all these waivers and variances, uh, to determine what is appropriate for our downtown area. Uh, so this is the proposed site plan for the project. Uh, the existing Wright House is in the back of the property. Uh, the house was actually built in the, uh, early nineteen hundreds, so it is a rather historic home for Holly Springs. Uh, was originally located where the Village Office condos are today. Uh, it was moved to this property, and in two thousand and seven, it was converted from a residential structure over into the current office building that it is today. Uh, so the proposal is to, uh, add on to the existing building, which is a little over fifteen hundred square feet, adding almost twelve hundred square feet to that building for a total of approximately twenty-seven hundred square feet of office, and then a new building up along Avant Ferry Road, which will be thirty-six hundred square feet of office space. Uh, you can see the new building is placed up very close to Avant Ferry Road, within our, uh, five to fifteen foot minimum-maximum setback range, and we like to see the buildings up along the street to encourage that urban development pattern, uh, traditionally seen in most downtown areas. As for the amount of parking spaces that are needed, uh, in our downtown area, we have a automatic reduction for all, uh, parking requirements. Uh, so you have your base parking requirement, and then if you're within three hundred feet of public parking, uh, which this project is, you automatically reduce that by fifty percent. So the total number of required parking spaces for this project is twelve. Uh, in order to go above that minimum parking requirement, you must request a waiver. So they are providing fourteen spaces, so two over our, our parking requirement, and so that's what the parking waiver is for, is to allow for those fourteen parking spaces rather than the twelve that our ordinance requires. Uh, this is the proposed landscaping plan. Uh, in our downtown area, we do require minimal landscaping around the perimeter, uh, but we do require all of our other landscaping, such as the foundation landscaping, which you can see around the existing building, as well as the proposed building, uh, parking screening to screen the parking lot from the street, as well as our interior parking islands, uh, and all those have been provided. Uh, these are the proposed building elevations for the new building along Avant Ferry Road. Uh, this is the front elevation, uh, that will be right up against the street. I mean, although it's not the front door of the building, uh, the architect has designed it to mimic what could be, uh, seen as a, a former entrance, uh, so that the building looks properly placed up against the street. Uh, the main entrance will actually be to the side facing the parking lot, uh, but this building has been designed to mimic the architecture of the existing Wright House. As you can see, this is the existing Wright House. With the addition, you can, you can't even tell the difference between what is the old and what is the new. Uh, so there are several waivers that are being requested. Um, again, this is in order to keep the integrity of the historical structure and make sure that all of the development on this property is consistent with that style. Um, I'm not gonna go into all these specific details, the, the specific percentages and numbers are all outlined in your packet, um, but it is a waiver request for building materials, uh, base body cap, variation in massing, windows and glass doors, as well as human scale elements. And then there are two variances being requested, one for each building. Our minimum height downtown is twenty-five feet. Uh, the existing structure does not meet that requirement, uh, it's a little short, about nineteen feet, so the addition, the request is to keep that same height, as well for the new building, to keep a similar height, so it's all compatible in scale. Uh, with that, I will invite Elizabeth up to briefly talk about the engineering requirements for this project.
Welcome back, Elizabeth.
Um, this project is, um, pretty straightforward with it, um, being more of an amendment, um, adding this new building, so a lot of the infrastructure was already in place from previous projects. Um, the water service to the building, there's an existing service that service, serves the current building from the rear. Um, there will be a connection to the water line on Avant Ferry Road that will be made with this project. There is, um, sewer service that will come off of Avant Ferry Road to serve the new building. The existing service will be maintained for the existing building. Um, with the traffic study, um, for this project, we did look at what the existing building was and adding the new, um, building and what the additional trips would be. It did not meet the threshold for requiring a traffic study, so it did not, they were not required to do one. Um, the road improvements along Avant Ferry Road were already complete, the curb and gutter was, however, the sidewalk will be completed as a part of this, and, um, there'll be like a plaza area as a part of the new construction to maintain that connectivity. Um, they are providing a cross-access easement, so that it can connect to the future MEMS park that will be along the property to the rear, and from an environmental side of things, it's pretty straightforward. It is gonna, um, it does have to meet the town's NPDs, um, phase two post-construction stormwater ordinance, but it will go to the town's regional BMP in this area, or stormwater control measure, as we're starting to call them. I will eventually get to where I transition.
Stormwater control...
Measure.
Measure. Got it.
There's any questions? Was there another?
Questions of Elizabeth at this point. Planning board? A-do?
Uh, so, planning board did review this proposal last month. Uh, they are recommending approval of, uh, the waiver, special exception use in development plan, uh, that was eight-zero. Um, they did not raise any issues with the proposal. They thought it would be a good fit for downtown.
Were there questions of this, at this point, of Sean? No?
Mm-mm.
At this point, time of open public hearing. Laura Holloman, been sitting there patiently all evening. Yeah, it's all right. And again, just for the record.
Laura Holloman, Spalding and Norris, nine seventy-two Trinity Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six zero seven. Mayor, members of the Town Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know this property is called the Wright House, but it really should be called nine one nine Marketing, who has owned and operated the Wright House and the surrounding property since two thousand and seven. And the owner, David Chapman, is here tonight. At present, I just want to kind of mention a little bit about his company for a lot of you that aren't familiar with it, even though it's in our, in the Town Hall's backyard. At present, his company has grown to twenty-three full-time employees and expects to hire at least five more employees with the expansion. Currently, there are six offices in the Wright House with multiple employees in each office. The expansion will allow current offices to become bigger and also allow a TV production studio that will expand professional services available on-site. The new building, which is thirty-six hundred square feet, will house new offices and expansive conference meeting space. Now and on Marketing works with national franchises, including Golden Corral, Bright Clips, and the College Foundation of North Carolina, and has twice been named one of the two hundred fastest-growing private marketing companies by NIC Magazine. So I think that's something to brag about in Holly Springs, that this is, this is something that has been created here and has grown and blossomed, and this is a private investment that wishes to build, you know, the first new building in Holly Springs downtown since two thousand and three. That's a, that's a big deal. The Village District has several, has several, area plan has several recommendation policy or goals that apply to this project, including encouraging uses that will generate demand for other use, for other uses. So for example, by creating more office opportunities, this will include, increase the number of people working in the Village District, which will in turn drive the ban for retail restaurant and other associated uses and opportunities. Attract more private investment. If I could highlight and underline this, I could, you know, this is a large private investment that, that Mr. Chapman and his company is is willing to do and invest in the town rather than going somewhere else and saying, hey, it's been a good ride, but I could lease this out certainly, but I want to stay here and I want to grow my campus, and I want to put another building along and help, and help the downtown grow, and I think that's really important. Another large component of the Village District area plan is community character. Maintaining and enhancing that town's village character. You know, I think it's no secret that Holly Springs has a very limited number of historic structures in town, and that's why it's so important to celebrate and complement these existing structures. You know, you have the MEMS House and the Wright House that resemble traditional southern farmhouses, and that's why our architect took great attention to design in detail with not only making sure that the expansion would be symmetrical with the Wright House and not look out of place or it looked like, you know, just addition was just slapped up on there as an afterthought. But really, when this is all done, it'll look, it'll look symmetrical and it'll look like it was always that size. And the same thing with the new building in front, you know, to the passerby, it won't look like a, an eyesore that doesn't fit in that over area, you know, sandwiched in between the MEMS House right here and the Wright House behind it. You'll have something that's complimentary and it'll be its own kind of enclave of a special, of a special area in character in, in the downtown. I think that's really, that's really special. You know, Sean touched on the fact that their waivers were requested precisely to do that. You know, a lot of, all the, all the architectural requirements are really built to, to make a traditional downtown building, masonry brick, you know, something like, you know, the MEMS building across the street from, from Town Hall. And I think that would just be really out of character for that area of town and really kind of damage what, you know, the MEMS House is trying to create with all the brides that go over there to kind of have a wrinkle in time over there with, with the antebellum wedding, and then, you know, the Wright House behind it, who took great lengths to move when the Village Office condos wanted to locate across from here. And then I think the, the new building will do nothing but complement that area. So that's, that's what I wanted to say, and the owner is here, if you have any questions, and the architect as well.
Any questions? Even though this is part of the public hearing, she's also the applicant, so I guess we can go either way. Have any questions of Laura? Pretty much? Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
At this point, time of closed public hearing, further discussion. Motion? Got it? Okay, thank you. One of four.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash thirty-two, making and accepting the findings of fact for special exception use seventeen SEU oh three, variance of development standards seventeen dash VAR zero one and seventeen VAR zero two, waivers for architectural and design requirements seventeen WAV zero eight, seventeen WAV zero five, seventeen WAV zero seven, thirteen oh four, fourteen, fifteen, oh six, sixteen, twelve, and waiver of off-street parking requirement seventeen WAV eleven as submitted by Spalding and Norris PA and the Town Builders as specified in Exhibit A.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Having made the necessary findings of fact, a motion to approve waivers of UDO section three zero three C, architectural and site design requirements seventeen WAV zero eight, zero five, zero seven, thirteen, zero four, fourteen, fifteen, zero six, sixteen, and twelve, and waiver of UDO section seven dot zero four E, off-street parking requirements seventeen dash WAV eleven in association with development petition number zero seven dash DP dash zero eight dash A zero two for Wright House redevelopment as submitted by Spalding and Norris PA.
Second. Motion made in second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number three.
Motion to approve variance petition seventeen VAR oh one, request for a variance from Unified Development Ordinance section three dot oh three B four A, TV district minimum building height to allow for a reduction in the minimum building height from twenty-five feet to twenty feet and two inches for the proposed building adjacent to Avant Ferry Road, and seventeen dash VAR oh two, request for a variance from the Unified Development Ordinance section three dot oh three B four A, TV district minimum building height to allow for a reduction in the minimum building height from twenty-five feet to nineteen feet and seven inches for the Wright House addition.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, number four of four. Somebody.
I'll get it. Motion to approve special exception use number seventeen dash SEU dash zero three as specified in Unified Development Ordinance section three dot zero three A two A, TV Town Village to allow for a new project in the TV Town Village District and development plan number zero seven dash DP dash zero eight A zero two for Wright House redevelopment as submitted by Spalding and Norris PA, project number five nine six dash zero five, date revised zero six twelve twenty seventeen with the following conditions on the screen.
Motion made in second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Agenda item eight A, consent agenda, Mayor Pretim.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion made in second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Agenda item nine A, new business seventeen MAS oh seven A oh one, Hensley subdivision amendment. Sean, again.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is a request for a amendment to a previously approved subdivision. This is the Hensley subdivision. Just to orient you to the site, this is Holly Springs New Hill Road. This is the location of the Thales Academy that was discussed earlier this evening. It's kind of bookend between Thales and then Oakview Elementary over on the west side of the project. The Hensley subdivision, which is in the hatch pattern here, was originally approved back in March of two thousand and fifteen. They have since started building houses. They are requesting to add an additional, two parcels to their project area, and those parcels are the ones that are highlighted in red here. So in the red square on the screen is the original approved Hensley subdivision. It was for one hundred and fifty lots. Has seventy-five attached single-family units over on this side closer to Oakview Elementary, and seventy-five detached residential, single-family residential units on the eastern side of the project. And the area highlighted in yellow is the additional two parcels that they're requesting to be added in. Currently zoned R ten, at ten thousand square foot lots. Twenty-four lots are being requested to be added to this subdivision to bring the total to one hundred and seventy-four for the entire Hensley project. The gross density allowed by the R ten district is three point two five units per acre. With twenty-four houses, they have a proposed density of two point four seven units per acre, so well under our maximum requirement. The minimum lot area that we require in this district is ten thousand square feet, and they are proposing a minimum lot area that is just over ten thousand, with the average being around twelve to thirteen thousand square feet. All of the lots meet the minimum lot dimensions for the R ten zoning district, and setbacks for all the structures will be twenty feet on the front, six on the side, and twenty-five feet on the rear. This is the proposed landscaping plan for the project. Type A twenty landscape buffer is required along the perimeter of the project, that's an open type buffer. Along the thoroughfare, Holly Springs New Hill Road, a fifty-foot type B two twenty-five semi-opaque buffer is required, and you can see the detail for the landscaping here. Street trees will be provided along all the streets, consistent with what is currently approved for Hensley subdivision using laurel oak and lace bark elm, street trees with root guards. And I will invite Elizabeth up to talk about some of the infrastructure requirements.
Welcome back, Elizabeth, and I said that before.
Keeping us all on our toes, coming back and forth. This project, again, is an amendment to an existing approved development, so a lot of the infrastructure is in place already, but I'll kind of walk through how it's being extended for this additional piece, for these additional lots. So there's an existing water line that runs along New Hill Road. This project will connect to that as well as extend within Hensley to further serve these lots. The sewer service is coming from the back, it comes along the road and will tie to these lots, also will stub to Thales to allow for service of that project as well. With this project being located in the area it is, there is a reclaim service area that any non-potable needs, such as irrigation, must be using the reclaim system. So we have a reclaim water line that has been extended to this point with the original Hensley. It will be extended the next portion of frontage. Will get us very close to having this loop completed on this, this portion of the road. So there's still a small gap, but we're working our way down the road with the reclaim, the twelve-inch reclaim line. The transportation side of this, the original Hensley project was required to do a traffic study. We had the engineer go back in, reevaluate how the additional twenty-four lots would impact that study. Twenty-four lots alone does not trigger a traffic study. And in all fairness, it's a very small impact in the, the bigger perspective, but we wanted to be sure that it did not trigger certain improvements. And so that evaluation has been completed. However, there was not any major triggers that were added at this time. There were improvements that were required at the time Hensley came in, and they have been met at this point. There will be a fee in lieu towards that same signal. We were discussing the Green Oaks, New Hill Road intersection. There was one paid for the original lots. There will be an additional amount of money paid for the additional lots. Again, it's a very small percentage that goes that way with this particular subdivision. The road improvements, just as we have seen the road widening come down to the current end of the project, it will continue this last portion of New Hill. It will connect with what Thales is proposing for the, for half of the four-lane median divided cross-section. There is, obviously, we are connecting the road, extending it. They are providing connectivity on to Thales in order to tie to that public street. I know it's been asked why we had not considered possibly tying to the north, and I did want to point out, there is a C and D landfill that has been located to the north of this property, and that is, that's the reason that there was not stubs proposed going towards that at this time. We're working on making sure we make connectivity east-west. This is located in the Cape Fear River Basin and is subject to our town's post-construction stormwater ordinance and has appropriate stormwater control measures to address those requirements as well. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions of Elizabeth? Seeing none. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Planning Board reviewed this proposal last month. They do recommend approval, eight zero. There was some discussion on the connectivity with the project to adjacent sidewalks, specifically how it's going to connect to the existing Hensley with the sidewalks and the greenway along New Hill Road, but also how it was going to connect over to the proposed elementary school, Thales Academy. And then the board also discussed the need for the stoplight at Green Oaks and Holly Springs New Hill. And as Elizabeth discussed, they are paying towards a portion of that.
Any other questions, Sean?
So the, the new addition, the twenty-four lots, that's currently zoned R ten.
Zoned R ten, yes.
And the Hensley subdivision is zoned R eight at present. So they're not requesting any zoning changes. Those lots are going to be basically bigger than the others just because of the, the.
Zoning, yeah, so this, this dash line on the screen, following my arrow here, everything over on the right-hand side, this is all zoned R eight residential, and that was rezoned back in two thousand and fourteen. It was originally RMF fifteen, a multi-family zoning designation. So they downzoned to R eight, but the RMF fifteen remains on the portion closest to Oakview where the attached single-family residential is. So it's, the whole project is going to end up having three different zoning districts, RMF fifteen, R eight, and then R ten.
Sean, what's the buffer onto the east that's going to parallel to the new road for Thales Academy?
Thales Academy? It is a five-foot type A twenty, so it's an open type buffer, which really, pretty much the back of every lot is going to have maybe two large deciduous trees and a small evergreen tree. Because the, because the school's property is zoned residential, our ordinance looks at them as being two similar uses. So the school actually has to provide the increased buffer, not the residential neighborhood, because the school is the more intense use.
Okay.
What else? Seeing none. Who would like to tackle this one?
I'll get it. Every single one.
Sherry.
Motion to approve preliminary plan number fourteen MAS oh seven A oh one for Hensley subdivision as submitted by HH Hunt Schaefer LLC, project number two zero one six dash zero one eight, revised oh six twelve seventeen with the following conditions as stated on the screen.
Second. Motion made in second all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Sean. Or thank you, Sean, again, in a minute. Agenda item nine B, new business seventeen MAS oh three Sutton subdivision. Sean and Elizabeth?
Woo!
All right. This project is a proposed major subdivision located on the Sutton property that was just annexed earlier in this meeting. So just to refresh our memories where the project is located, here's GB Alfred Highway under my arrow on the screen here. If you come down Avant Ferry Road, the entrance to Morgan Park. It's at the back of the Morgan Park neighborhood, Utley Bluffs Drive is this street with Cul-de-sac here. So the property was recently rezoned to R ten conditional use. Several of the conditions related to architectural requirements, but there were a couple that were specific to site design. One of the conditions was that no lots could have driveways off of Berman Edge Road, which is this private road located along the bottom of the screen under my arrow here. And as you can see, all the lots are facing a new public street. None of them have access to Berman Edge. Another condition was that a twenty-foot undisturbed buffer would be provided along the portion of the lots that are closest to Berman Edge Road. And so that twenty-foot undisturbed buffer has also been provided to meet that zoning condition. Also, as a zoning condition, maximum proposed density was limited to two point four five units per acre. Typically, in R ten, we would have a maximum of three point two five, so the property owner limited their density as part of their zoning. density as part of their zoning conditions. At 16 lots, the proposed density is 2.41, so they are meeting their maximum allowed density for this project. In R-10, our minimum lot size, again, 10,000 square feet. This subdivision proposes a minimum lot size just over 10,000 square feet, the largest being a little over 18,000, and the average around 12,000 square feet. The back half of the property, which is currently zoned R-30, that will remain available for future development. That was one of the things that the planning board had asked about, and the applicant could come up and speak more, but they responded that their intent is to keep that at R-30 This is the proposed landscaping plan. Again, street trees will be provided along all of our interior streets. Three different species have been provided to encourage biodiversity. The type of buffer that is required along the perimeter, again, this is residential to residential, so our minimum by ordinance is a five-foot type A20 open buffer, and you'll see that that buffer has been provided along the perimeter of the project with the exception of the area along the back, which is meeting that 20-foot undisturbed buffer condition that was part of the rezoning. So that's why the buffers are different from one side of the subdivision to the other. I will point out that a centralized mail kiosk location is being provided towards the front of this project with parking space to meet accessibility requirements as well. And I will again invite Elizabeth up to go through infrastructure requirements.
Not saying a word.
So the engineering requirements for this project include extending a water line from Utley Bluffs down the new residential street to serve these lots. There's also a sewer line currently in Utley Bluffs Drive in order to serve these lots by gravity sewer. This project also, we looked at the number of lots and the transportation improvements that were needed. It did not warrant a traffic study because of the number of lots. It also did not have access on any road identified on our comprehensive transportation plan since it is nestled behind Morgan Park. So they will be extending their own residential streets, stubbing for the future development of the rest of the lot, and adding the cul-de-sac internal street network. They are within our Neuse River Basin and are providing a stormwater control measure to meet the town's stormwater ordinance. And I'm happy to answer questions on this one.
Does this, the adding of the, all these additional sewer services, does that have any impact upon existing lift stations since this is a gravity feed sewer? Does?
We do have them look at downstream sewer, and I believe there was a sewer study done for this one, and there was no capacity issues on the downstream lines. This does go gravity straight to the treatment plant by way of Morgan Park, Trotters Bluff, and then through existing gravity lines, and those lines are adequate to serve.
So no additional, no impact upon the, any lift station whatsoever? One other question, I'm not sure you're the one that asked this. Construction traffic, or would it be, that was, in an earlier, earlier this evening, we had someone make public comments asking about, one of theirs was the construction traffic and limiting where that traffic would be. What is the thought process here?
It is a tricky one for this one because it is nestled behind the Morgan Park subdivision. We do periodically look at if there's a less impactful route for construction traffic to come and go. I don't know that we've looked at the specifics of that on this one at this point. Obviously, with the questions and concerns that were raised, we will look at it. It is something that is going to have to have an access.
I think it would be appreciated by the residents and everything since it would waste their concerns.
There will be some way that, that needs to be able to gain access out to Event Ferry Road, and it's likely going to impact Morgan Park in some way, but trying to do it in a minimal.
There's no good way to get there, so, but whatever, whatever they can do to minimize their impacts, I think they would appreciate.
The applicant is here and is also able to hear these concerns, so it will work on from the construction drawing review perspective and with them to try and find the best way possible.
Even during certain hours would be, would be helpful when moving large piping equipment and stuff to avoid morning or evening hours, or just something where it would be least impactful.
Yeah.
Speaking from experience, I mean, not through my neighborhood, but I know that some of the heavy stuff that gets put back there.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Got it, got it. Okay. Anything else?
The odor in that area, is there any kind of?
Is that to ask you, or do we ask?
Yeah.
We've got multiple departments that are affected by this question. Let's see how best to speak to it. The location of this site is adjacent to the town's wastewater treatment plant facility. There are certain things that come from being close to that facility, and we have made sure that the applicant is aware and that we would like for them to notify the residents through HOA documents, through Platts, of the proximity to the treatment plant, and that there are noise, odors, and other operations that may impact this area. It is a, it's an existing facility, and they will be building adjacent to it. That's the best I think we are able to do on notifying them. I don't know if there's any other comments.
Buyer due diligence.
Buyer beware.
Well, is that a separate HOA, right? They have their own HOA?
They will have a separate HOA.
Okay. Because I was out there last, last night talking to some of the residents there, and they don't have that in their HOA that discloses that, you know, you're within, you know, a certain amount of feet of the.
The Morgan Park PUD was approved quite a while ago, and that may not have been a requirement to be incorporated into that. It is something we've adopted through the years with properties close to pump stations and have kind of standard procedures of making sure the immediate homes adjacent to that are notified through notes on the plat that will transfer in the best way we have into documents that they would see. But I don't disagree that it's probably not in the Morgan Park HOA documents.
Current situations kind of indicate that anytime something like this happens, it's not quite as often as maybe the other landfill issue we have in town, but they're very receptive at the plant and work very hard and very quickly to eliminate when we have that problem. I think most of us get an email on that showing the graph and everything else, so that's the good news that I.
I know that Sean Byrd with our Public Utilities Department has worked with the Morgan Park residents in trying to address some of their concerns and helping to work through that issue.
Like I said, it's, you know, buyer due diligence, and I highly doubt that any of their real estate salespeople notified them of that upfront, that this was a possibility that they could smell something or that they were located near that.
What else?
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Planning Board recommended approval, eight-zero. And they had the same conversations that we've just had about proximity to the treatment plant.
Oh, yeah.
If there were any restrictions for houses being in close proximity, there are not. And they also questioned about the remaining acres behind the subdivision that are zoned R-30. And the applicant is here, they can discuss their plans with you, but the applicant responded that they plan on leaving it at R-30 due to the grade of the land.
Anything else, Board?
Hear from the applicant.
You want to hear from the applicant?
Um, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Would the applicant please come forward?
Hi, Laura.
I guess reintroduce yourself, Laura, if you would.
Sure. Laura Holland with Spalding Norris, and I have Tom Spalding with Spalding Norris. He's going to speak to some of the other issues that were raised. But just real quick, you know, I think we all know it was zoned R-10 conditional use last fall. Sean, whenever those conditions with you on our plan and how they're being met as requirements, you know, this was something that, that was a hybrid zoning that the property owner and the team worked really hard on putting together so that it would be harmonious with the surrounding area. You know, the 20-foot undisturbed buffer along Berman Edge, that was done as an additional transition between the Happy Hunting Hills subdivision, which was an existing R-30 subdivision, and dealing with the neighborhood meeting and the neighbors, their lots are in access of an acre. So we thought as an additional good, good faith effort, we would allow them to have a 20-foot undisturbed buffer there because they've, you know, that's, that's kind of a different subdivision. It's a subdivision, but it's not, you know, those, those homes operate as, as kind of individual homesteads. As far as the other side, you know, that's, that's a five-foot to five-foot, you know, those are, that's, will have, you know, the subdivision will have, you know, homes along Utley Bluffs. So, you know, for the, for the passerby, you know, five to 10 years from now, this will be a seamless transition and look like a, just a typical residential street, you know, kind of like how the overlook in Holly Glen or, gosh, what's that neighborhood in the very back of Holly Glen? The moors, the moors of Holly Glen, you know, they don't have a, they don't have an expansive, expansive buffer, 20-foot buffer along, along that. Are they part of Holly, well, it was approved as a separate subdivision, but yes. So that's, you know, that's some of, that's some of our, our thought process for that. You know, this is, this isn't a very big parcel of land. There weren't too many options in terms of design. This is an existing stub road that, that Morgan Park provided, so it was, it was pretty much we knew that this is where our, our new road was going to happen in the, in the cul-de-sac here. You know, Sean, whenever the density that's allowed is 2.45, we're showing 2.41, you know, we're, we're meeting the average lot size. Our average lot size is actually well above the minimum, lot size of 10,000, we're over 12,000. So that's, that's kind of a nutshell of this subdivision. You know, it's an infill subdivision. It's, it's allowing an adequate transition between smaller lots up here and Morgan Park here, and also being cognizant of the fact that there's larger lots in logging road with Berman Edge. And so the, the belief always was for this remaining area to remain R-30. And, you know, that was brought up at planning board. In addition to, you know, that transition, there's a lot of significant environmental as well as steep land, so at most, you know, it drops off a sizable amount, so at most, you know, we can extend this road, you know, this way and then have a, have just a few lots. The pond, there's a big pond back there, and that's, that was surveyed, and we know that that has to be remained, has to, it was, it was determined that was a jurisdictional pond, so that has to be kept in perpetuity and buffered so that, you know, that's, it's not going to be a lot of development back there, ever. So with that, I'll let Tom speak to other questions.
Yeah, members of the council, just real briefly, what, well, first of all, this, this property is owned by Mr. Sutton, and he's lived there for quite a long time and owned this property for what, quite a long time. He actually lives on Berman Ave, or Berman Way, and decided that he was going to put in a few lots. Jeff Ryder is going to be the builder, and they, they aren't big-time developers, they aren't big track builders. They are going to do custom homes one at a time. They're not going to do mass clearing. There is some area that has been cleared already here, but we've been in conversations for the last two weeks of how can we do minimum cutting and go in and just do, you know, put homes and leave the trees in? So this isn't going to be, you know, cut them down and slap them up as fast as we can. These are going to be, you know, sold and customized to each individual resident. And yes, Mr. Sutton's lived there his whole life. He's, he's fully aware of the treatment plant, and that is going to be, you know, not only in the HO documents, but it needs to be disclosed at real estate time. That's a, that's a big no-no not to do that if you're in the real estate business. Other than that, this, this was always planned, where it is, with a stub, there was a stub street here made as part of the Morgan Park, and a manhole stubbed out to this property just for this reason, to be able to, you know, do a few lots. The rest of the property falls off, like Laura said, tremendously. The idea is to do some three to five acre lots back there. There's a nice pond, you know, and probably, you know, just keep it very rural in nature because of the topo. And that's the plan.
Okay. Questions?
Is the, is the drop-off dangerous? Is the drop-off dangerous? Would residents, should residents be, future residents be concerned if they walk out?
It's, I don't say it's dangerous, it's wooded, you know, so it's just, I guess, a little bit more topo than you would normally see in Holly Springs. You're getting slopes that are, you know, when we grade, when you grade lots in larger subdivisions, you get to a three to one slope. These are probably between two and a half to three to one for some sections, and then it flattens off, you know, as, you know, I'm not a geology person, but, you know, it formed in that, in that fashion. There's a couple draws that go down to, I think it's Utley Creek right there.
So the question that came up earlier about the construction traffic, where do we see that construction traffic coming in, going out?
Yes. Forgot to address that. So, can you go back one? Uh, no, that's all right. So the streets that we're proposing is going to be somewhere around 600 to 700 feet of pavement. So when we first go in and do what I would consider large construction, you're going to drop off your equipment and should be able to build those roads and utility lines roughly within a couple months. It's, it's not a large amount of streets. From that point, now we're building these custom homes, which is a lot different than, you know, if you, if you drive out in Morgan Park right now, you might have an entire row here being built on at one time, and you've got, you know, contractors parked everywhere. It's going to be a totally different situation. The, the bad part about this, as you noted, is that, you know, you're not going to use the private logging road. The folks over in this subdivision here are not, not happy, you know, with that situation, and the construction traffic, there's a barricade here, so you can't go out. So unfortunately, for these 16 lots, it is going to have to access this, but once the construction, for large construction gets done, it should be more of a onesie-twosies for homes.
I mean, we all know that, those of us who've lived in neighborhoods that are being developed, that construction traffic can be a huge problem. Speed, debris, things like that. And, I mean, this is going right through one neighborhood to another. I mean, that's, that's going to be something that has to be, has to be monitored.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what we need to do is sit down with the town staff, the engineering department, and figure out a way to monitor and to, you know, detour.
And I know in the past, engineers of, the engineering department has worked with developer at pre-con stage, have talked about hours of operation and things like that that can be established.
Right. So we have an ordinance that talks about the different, the times and holidays and the times which you can do usual construction. Enforcement of that is, usually our inspectors are not here on holidays and on the weekends. So the only thing is if someone complains, I don't know if the police chief is here, but, I mean, that's really on the weekends when our inspectors aren't here as far as enforcement. But we do say, we have this happen a lot. I mean, you think about all the subdivisions, and they do in phases. They agree to a certain route, whether we go north or south of the common space, but that's the route in and out. It's signed so that people coming in and out of the site know to use that path. We usually carry a bond on that road much longer because we're watching it for asphalt damage. And other than that, I mean, I think we've, like at Creekside on Sunset Lake Road, we actually closed, like where Carrington Estates is, we actually had that closed off. But for this, there's not a real way to close the traffic. It is public right-of-way, and I think just trying to monitor, getting them to use a route, putting a condition on the construction drawings, Monday through Friday, we can enforce it from eight to five.
And there's, there's still about 30, 30-plus or minus homes still left. And there's still about 30, 30-plus or minus homes still left to be built in Morgan Park.
The trees that back up to the treatment plant, what do you anticipate in terms of how much you're going to cut? Because that's a buffer for the smell as well.
So years ago, there was some minimal clearing here on these four lots which face, the plan is right now, we're going to just grade for these streets in here. These lots here and these lots here should remain wooded with the exception of whatever's needed to clear for the road for this cul-de-sac. Now, this area drops off here a little bit, so we have got a plan where we're going to be putting some fill in here to make these better basement lots. But the plan, everything I've heard from the custom builder Jeff is, I want to leave as many trees as I can, I don't want to fill. I don't want it to, you know, I want me to stand out because I'm a small-time custom builder. And so that's, that's kind of our current plan. We will have a stormwater device here that will have to provide for detention and stormwater treatment, but the plan is, is to leave as many trees as we can.
And that five-foot buffer, parallel to, I guess, the north of the subdivision there?
Probably both.
Yeah, those are custom homes that are built there. They're expensive homes. Any way to, I mean, five feet is not a lot.
It is. Like I said, right along here, this is a sideline for this lot. It's been partially cleared. Certainly, we've got, no, this is a stream buffer that comes up here, so this won't be disturbed. This is way in the rear of this lot, that's a 20-foot rear set bike. And we could look at making some undisturbed up to this lot line here, but I'd really need to look at how much is left right here.
Yeah, that's where the lady who spoke tonight, she lives parallel to that potential new house there, yeah.
And that's, that's the old age question of, you know, making dividing lines between subdivisions or not, you know. Certainly, we would be amenable to making some additional plantings there. I don't think it's really the size of the buffer so much as the amount of plantings that you're looking for, if I'm correct. Maybe some additional planting, so.
Is that, is that an option that you could, for that specific area there?
Jeff, why don't you come up?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Rider. I'm anticipating being the builder on this property. I've lived here all my life. I wish the residents that brought up these concerns would have stayed so they could, we'd have had an opportunity, because we didn't, we didn't even know they were here. The residents down along Happy Hunting Hills, we felt like we came to a, you know, a reason we had discussion, we worked it out. Another one lady said she was new to the area. I'm going to be here when this thing is over. You know, I'm a, I'm a local custom builder. We're not going to build 20 at a time. I think our construction traffic will be much more agreeable to them as compared to what they've put up with to dust point. And I'm sorry, the whole reason, how do I do this?
Just move it around.
I don't even see it. Am I moving this? Ah, there it is. Okay, her house is right here and there's a fence along this property line, a privacy fence, that we didn't put it up there, we didn't even want it there because we want a seamless transition here. And I'll be honest, I don't even know how they're going to maintain it because it comes within a foot of our property. So I don't know if they wanted to refurbish it, they're going to have to get our permission to do it. I mean, we'll grant it, but we didn't put it there. But it does provide her some privacy and it does prevent us from, if we wanted to landscape screen it, we can't. So we didn't do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have of me or us.
Yeah, I wish she had stayed to talk to you.
I do too, but they didn't.
Maybe we can have her reach out to you so that you can kind of explain and walk her through, setting the right expectations and what, you know.
We would do that, but again, we didn't know.
But the intensity of this, this is, you know, they're both residential. Morgan Park is zoned a PUD.
Yes, sir.
Which is probably more intensive than this.
Than ours.
Additional use R-10.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, if you're really looking at it, it really should be the other way around. I mean, it's essentially, I mean, it's the equivalent of, I mean, it's really just residential to residential. I mean, just because it's a different builder or a different development, it's, to me, it's still just residential to residential. I mean, if it was, you know, you were a townhouse development.
Right.
Or you were, you know, an R-8.
Yes, sir.
Type of development. To me, yeah, maybe, but it seems like as if it's apples to apples.
We hope that somebody driving a car by won't be able to tell the difference between their subdivision stopping and ours beginning. I mean, that's what we hope. But the fence is there, but like I said, we did not put it there.
I'll put you in touch with that lady. I got her information.
That's the way to handle it, I think, too.
Anybody else?
Doctor, anybody else?
No, no, it sounds like you all do predict, are predicting, you know, there will be probably a few complaints about construction traffic and I just ask that you just keep an eye on it and just.
We're going to do the best, we're going to be here when this thing is over. We're not, I'm not moving.
Thanks.
I live here. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Sean, anything else?
I can just clarify what the fence is on this property line. So Morgan Park had to do a perimeter buffer as part of their planned unit development and there's a 15-foot semi-opaque buffer as part of Morgan Park that follows these lot lines. And so that's a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees and then the Morgan Park developer put that fence in as part of their buffer because this, at the time, when, excuse me, this property that we're talking about was still zoned R-30, the lots that were being put in in Morgan Park were of a much more, much higher intensity. And so rather than a five-foot buffer, Morgan Park had to do a 15-foot buffer and rather than a type A buffer, they had to do a semi-opaque, which is what we call type B. So Morgan Park already put in an intensive buffer, then this one was rezoned to a comparable zoning district to the lots in Morgan Park. And so that's what the fence is.
We have one motion.
Motion to approve preliminary plan number 17-mas dash 03 for Sutton subdivision as submitted by Spalding and Norris, PA. Project number 410-02 revised 06-16-2017 with the following conditions as stated on the screen.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Agenda item 9C, new business, the brunch bill authorization. Counselor John Chafano.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the General Assembly has just authorized municipalities to, if they so choose, to allow ABC permities to sell wine, fortified wine, beer, inspiritus liquor, beginning at 10 o'clock on Sunday or really at any time prior to noon. The law has been that, I think the mid-'80s that you can't serve alcohol on Sunday before noon. So the General Assembly has given you the option, if you choose to pass an ordinance, to allow that, those sales prior to, or beginning at 10 o'clock instead of noon. So there is an ordinance, 17-07, that effectuates that if you deem to pass it.
When would that be effective, if we pass it at night at 8:00?
The first Sunday, yeah. The next Sunday, it rolls around, you just, you're going to have your mimosa and Bloody Mary. Not at the same time.
The information I've gotten from, everybody's called me, is rather simple to explain. I've had everybody for this motion and nobody against it. I'm curious to know what else the board has heard.
No negative comments that I've received?
No, I've spoken to a few restaurant owners and they're, they're happy to see it passed, for sure.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything against.
No, I've gotten a few emails or messages on Facebook and people want to start drinking on Monday morning.
I heard that.
Just the church wine.
Eat same.
Exactly, no complaints.
All right, do we need to discuss this any further?
Say, make it so.
All right, motion please. Somebody hit it.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 17-07 to allow the sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, and mixed beverages on Sundays beginning at 10:00 a.m.
Second. Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Tom, you don't, you don't, you don't envive either. I don't donate to the cause. Closet, never mind, never mind. 10-990, new business, North Main Street sidewalk project, Town of Holly Springs, 15-018. Great tie. Steven Boat.
Love the tie.
Good evening.
Cleans up nice, doesn't he? He cleans up very good.
All right, I make it short, now it's late. I would like to present to you the North Main Street sidewalk project. Oops.
There we go.
Here's the map, what this, so this sidewalk would be about 2,050 linear feet, starting at around in front of the Oak Hall subdivision, would kind of like continue the existing sidewalk all the way to the North Main Athletic Complex. So you would be able to walk from the Village District to the ballgame. We, the surveying, the design and construction will be completed by outside consultants and also by outside contractors. The construction admission, administration may be completed by engineering department staff. So we had requested and received an engineering design service contract from Sungate Design, which they would subcontract out the survey and the subsurface utility engineering service. And we would recommend awarding the contract to Sungate Design Group. Any comments, questions?
Questions or comments? I just have one comment, we may have to have some cars removed from the front of Don's, whatever.
I know, it's like, have they talked to Don?
You know exactly what I'm talking about. Like here? Okay, other questions?
No, I'm looking forward to it. It's nice to have, just as a runner, I'm not too keen on running along Main Street at that point.
I actually walked this like a month ago when my wife said she's going to pick me up, but then she didn't show up, so I said, I'm going to start walking to the North Main Athletic Complex and I made it.
Down the cars, kid.
So we have plenty of right-of-way on the left side that we can just utilize and we don't anticipate to purchase any right-of-way at this point. So it's going to be, going to be nice.
The money, the funding's available out of, coming out of street reserves, correct?
Yes.
Well, we had street reserves, I think we changed the agenda item, we found out Powell Bill could be used. Because it's contiguous in the town limits, so.
Powell Bill, okay, all right.
Powell Bill, yes, I'm sorry. So we recommend to award the contract in the amount of $101,797 to Sungate Design Group for engineering design and survey services, approve funding in the amount of $112,000, which includes contingency, and to approve the project budget.
Okay, motion?
I'll make the motion to award contract in the amount of $101,797 to Sungate Design Group, PA, for engineering design and survey services, approve funding in the amount of $112,000, including contingency, and approve the project budget.
Motion made, second in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Thank you. Agenda item 9E is one that we are now just skipping, I guess?
Yes.
Pull it out for tonight? Yeah, okay. Going to 9F, new business, offer of sale of 129 North Main Street, former site of fire station number one and police. Again, Counselor John Chafano.
We received a written offer for purchase and according to the statute, that offer has to come to you for consideration and if you choose to accept it or entertain accepting it, then it, what we would do is publish an ad in the newspaper, say that you are considering an offer to sell this town property and then any interested third party can bid on it by submitting a bid of, in excess of 10% above the original bid amount, in which case, if that happens, then they would need to give us a deposit and then we would advertise again and another 10 days would accrue until no further bids were allowed or received. Now, this property is addressed as both 127 and 129 North Main Street. It was at the corner of Earp Street, North Main. It's the former, served as the town hall property at one point, served as the, most recently, the Public Safety Center, was a police and fire station and that was the old Holt House that was taken down by Public Works several years ago. And we have recently had it appraised in January of this year for $298,000. Prior to that, in 2008, it was appraised for about $240,000. Problem is, there's not been a lot of voluntary land sales in the downtown area, so it's a difficult appraisal to happen, but I do think that two, right about $300,000 is fair market value for this property. So the offer came in from ABCZ Properties LLC and he's a local businessman, Abel Zalsberg, and that's his LLC. To purchase that property, you'll note that it's the former, or the site of the former Mosaic on Main property that just never got off the ground. It was a commercial development plan that just did not get off the ground, so I would imagine that it, if you were to entertain accepting this offer and the bid period expired and Mr. Zalsberg was the property owner, you'd see a development plan, probably similar in nature to Mosaic, but different come forth, which you can look at. The one thing that you might want to note, or that I would note on this sales contract that's a little bit different than, say, a normal government surplus property sale is that he's asking for a 180-day due diligence period, which is very typical. sale, is that he's asking for a 180-day due diligence period, which is very typical, um, of a voluntary real estate transaction, but with respect to this, this 10-day issue, um, you know, he would, he would forfeit his deposit, um, the five percent, a 5% deposit. Um, but, you know, I, I would suggest, you know, signing a contract with a, the due diligence period, which is just very typical in real estate, and, um, allows him to get his development approvals in line and, and whatnot, so that he doesn't have to, um, uh, be stuck with the property, um, if, if he can't make the use of it that he intends to, so, um, you know, that's, that's, I don't want to say it's atypical, because it's atypical for us to sell any property, but, um, it's typical of voluntary real estate transactions that there's this due diligence period that gives him an out to not purchase the property. Um, believe, uh, there were people here from ABCZ, if, if you want to speak as to the, um, anything, but, um, you know, I, I don't, there's not a public hearing requirement at this stage for, um, you know, entertaining the offer of sale.
You good? Good?
Good.
Okay. Any questions of council? If not, next item would be, there it is.
Okay. Motion to accept purchase offer of $298,000 for 127 slash 129 North Main Street property and proceed with sale of property bid process.
Second.
Motion made in second half favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you unanimously. Item 10, other business. Uh, I have one or two things. Number one, progress is still being made on crosswalk safety. We're not done. I watch it every day, and it's better, trust me. Uh, we're not there. We still got the race. And if you're doing nothing more important than having some fun on Saturday, come to Farmer's Market. Once again, we're, we're having that event, I think it's called Founder's Day, am I correct?
Founder's Day.
Yeah, okay. And we will have a tent there for the Anti-Bullying Crusade, which continues on, and again, we're making some progress on that. So, stop by, and we'll get you a free wristband and maybe a sticker and a few other things, so, uh, I will see you guys then. Next.
I, like many people, attended some of the, uh, Coastal Plain League All-Star festivities between the, uh, Home Run Derby, who was won by a young, young man who was six foot seven, which is tall.
Little fall.
Um, you know, and as well as the All-Star game itself, so I think that was a big coup for Holly Springs to get that event.
It was.
Yeah, it was great.
It was a great event, good attendance, and it was just fun watching the kids out there playing. They, uh, had, had a lot, they had a lot of fun.
And that it was, you know, people could watch it on, you know, that.
MLB.
Network, MLB.com, and so it was neat.
Yeah.
I still like the Savannah Bananas, but you're right. What else? Good, good, good. Managers report.
Uh, I would only add the, uh, in terms of the All-Star game, I think it was the second most highly attended, uh, All-Star game in Coastal Plain League history. I think they announced that.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, that Major League Baseball network reaches up to 25 million households. It was pretty cool, Justin, um, contacted a couple of us the night after the All-Star game. I think they were taking sort of a victory lap, he and his, uh, his family, and they were at the theater, and while at the theater, um, at the cinema, on the TV, one of the TV monitors had the, the Coastal Plain League All-Star game being televised the day after, so that's pretty cool.
He was showing it live on his phone. He was, he was walking around the stadium with an, with his phone saying, you know, there it is, there it is.
Yes.
That's Justin Sellers, who's the commissioner. Go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner of the Coastal Plain League, yes, sir. Uh, and you, you'd mentioned Founder's Day at the Farmer's Market this year, and that's also Town Information Day, so we'll have a number of booths set up, uh, with various departments represented, so if you have questions about upcoming developments, um, you know, it's a great opportunity for, for residents to get out and to, uh, you know, to ask questions of our staff, because we will have, uh, have folks at the, at that event. That's all I have.
Counselor.
Nothing that can't wait till next time.
Thank you, sir.
May I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Thank you for staying up. Thanks, chief.